Yes, yes. We're ready. Thank you. Yes, we are.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Katari City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Katari Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. And with that, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rivers.
Here.
Councilmember Lemus.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks.
Here.
Mayor Harvey.
Here. Thank you for that. And then would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you for that. And we will move to the next item, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and or ordinances introduced and or adopted under this agenda. And we have one item, which is the Katari City Council regular meeting from April 11. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, I will open this up for a public comment. Anyone wishing to make public comment on the minutes could please step forward, raise your hand. Nope, I'm seeing shaking heads. Kevin, could we see if anyone on Zoom would like to make comments on the minutes of April 11?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment on approval of the minutes, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Then I would be looking for a motion for the minutes.
Move that we approve the minutes?
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any no's, any abstentions? Then that passes unanimously. Then we will move forward on to announcements. Okay, meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services of variety of recreation programs for all ages and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at katari-city.org. Next, citizens are interested in receiving city of Katari community alerts via text or email. Are encouraged to sign up with the Nick with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from iOS or Android App Store, or by texting your zip code, which is 949312888777. Next, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@katari-city.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please call 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, and Nixle. So with that, we will move on to proclamations. And we do have one proclamation. Proclamation of the City Council of the City Katari recognizing April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I believe we have some folks from Verity with us. Come up, I will read to you.
Awesome. We just want to thank all of you on behalf of Team Verity for recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The work we do is really important to us, and we wouldn't be where we are today without all of your support.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, we do have a 24/7 crisis line that has trained crisis line counselors there to provide support to survivors and their families. And we couldn't do it without our partnership with you guys. So thank you so much.
Okay, I will read our proclamation to you. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Katari recognizing April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has a profound and lasting impact on every community member of Sonoma County. And whereas Verity Sonoma County's Rape Crisis Trauma and Healing Center continues their work with survivors in Sonoma County. And whereas national research indicates that one in five women will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and nearly half of all women will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas one in 17 men will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and one in five men will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas young people are the greatest risk of sexual violence and youth age 12 to 17 are two and a half times more likely to be raped sexually assaulted or sexually sexually than their adult counterparts. And whereas disabled people, people of color, queer people, homeless people, transgender people, undocumented people, youth in foster care, and people of other marginalized identities are even more likely to be victimized by sexual violence. And whereas over 18,000 members of the military and over 80,000 people who are incarcerated experience sexual violence every year. Whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in the city of Katari through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas the city of Katari strongly supports the efforts of Verity and encourages every resident to actively engage in public and private efforts to end sexual violence, including conversations about what sexual violence is and how to prevent it, how to help survivors of all backgrounds connect with crucial counseling and other support services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Therefore, be it resolved, the city of Katari reaffirms its commitment to address the issues of rape and sexual violence by remembering victims, believing and supporting survivors, holding perpetrators accountable for their actions, and challenging societal myths and behaviors that perpetuate sexual violence in our community. And be it further resolved that along with the United States government, the state of California, the city Katari designates the month of April 2023 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So with that, comments from anyone on the council?
I'll just say thank you for your work, really important work.
Thank you so much for being here. And did you want to provide that phone number that you mentioned?
Yeah, yes. So our 24/7 crisis line phone number is 707-545. And is it, it's?
7273.
Yeah, 7273. And then we do have some events going on this month that we just wanted to briefly share with you guys. One of them is a dine and donate at John Julio's in Renter Park. And so if you go on this Thursday and say that you're, you know, there to support Verity, 20% of the proceeds go to us. And we also have a film coming up on May 9th that will, it's a survivor, it's a film based on, you know, some of our survivors. And it's pretty great.
And one of our colleagues is going to be on the panel for that. So it's a really good film. We've done it before in Santa Rosa, but not since Sebastopol to raise more awareness. And then we also brought some stickers and pins and stuff for all of you. We assume there will be members from the public here too. So you can take extra.
Great.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much. I'm a high school teacher in Santa Rosa and deal with a lot of this. And I'm a survivor myself. And so I very, very much appreciate all the work you do for all of my students and for all of the people like me. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, I just want to thank you also for your work and the community. We all need it, you know, this support. And it just affects a lot of families, including my family. And so I just want to appreciate all your work. And thank you for being here today.
Yeah, it's not easy work that you do, but it's very, very important work. And it takes, you know, a special person to be able to help people when they are in dire need of it. And my heart goes out to you for all the hard situations that you deal with, but helping get people what they need to be where they need to be. So really appreciate the hard work you do.
Thank you.
With that, would you like a photo?
Yes. Okay, that would be great. Should we use? Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, come in front of them.
Don Julio's.
I heard, I didn't hear it too. Yeah, it sounds good. Yeah, you should be in the middle with the mayor.
Thank you guys. Thank you so much. Of course. And then if you'd like pins, and especially if you have kids, stickers are a great idea. I don't know if you might want to use those.
We do, we have.
Yeah. Yeah, and stickers too.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. You know what, I'm just gonna dump it.
Dump it, and everyone can go grab them.
Before you guys leave, I am going to open this up for public comment for those members on Zoom, in case anyone would like to comment.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on the proclamation, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Great. Thank you for that. And thank you for all you do. And you're welcome to stay, or we understand if you have to go.
You said there's a board out. A bulletin board, okay?
Yeah. Um, yeah, leave it with Kevin. He'll, he'll get them put up on the bulletin board.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Have a good one. And thank you for joining us tonight. All right. So with that, we will move on to approval of the final agenda. We do, we do have one item, item 11A, which is appointment to the library commission. And I was not able to connect with the folks that were submitted applications. I did speak with one, but have not been able to connect up with the others. So we will continue that item, because I think it's important to talk, to speak to folks before we just assign them. So that will come back again next time. Any other changes to the agenda?
No other changes, Mayor.
Okay. And then, since this, is that okay with everyone? All right. Do we need an actual motion for that? To move that? Are we okay with concurrence?
Concurrents is fine, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I will open that up for public comment that we are moving, continuing one item to our next meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on approval of the final agenda, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Thank you for that. Then we will move on to citizens business and public comment for the consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any items not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, I will open up citizens business. And we have lost our audience here. So can we open it up on Zoom?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment for citizens business or the consent calendar items, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for that. So we will move on to the consent calendar. And on the consent calendar, we have item A, Support for the Mayor's Monarch Butterfly Pledge. And that is all we have on the consent calendar tonight. So I would be, yes.
I'd just like to make the edit that mayors needs an apostrophe at the end. It's possessive. So just, I found it like throughout the packet. If you could just please correct it on the final one, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. I would be looking for a motion for the consent calendar.
Is there discussion first, or?
So do we have a, I mean, we can pull it if, if someone wants to make comments, we can pull that. Okay, all right. So then I would be looking for a motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar items.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstentions? Not seeing any, so that passes unanimously. Then we will move on to direction on future agenda items. Not seeing anybody raising their hand on that. Okay, then we will move on to our regular agenda. And so we continued item A. So that one's not there anymore. So we will move on to item B, which is the annual police chief report to the community. Chief Parrish, is that you?
Mayor, that is me. Good evening and good evening, council members. Kevin's going to pull up a PowerPoint for me here real quick. There it is. So Mayor and Council, this is an overview that I'm going to give of the annual report, a little different than the So Mayor and Council, this is an overview that I'm going to give of the annual report, a little different than the last couple of years. The, the actual report, my annual report will soon be available on the police webpage so that citizens can go on and, and look at our annual report. And so I'll just go ahead and get going here. And you can hear me loud and clear? All right, good. Yeah, so a big part of this report is we're going to talk about the specialized assistance for everyone data, which I know that council really wants to see that. And it's a good thing. And then also, I'm going to talk about an overview of the six, the first six months of RIPA data. And that would be the data collected in '21 from July to December of 2021. So some highlights, as, as you're aware, the last couple of years, we've done our high-low siren drill. And I just want to remind people, it's not just for wildfires, right? This is for significant emergency for evacuation purposes. During strategic planning, I discuss with council future high-low siren drills. Council requested more. And so we will do that this year. And more will be, one will be associating the high-low drill with emergency notification through Nixle or whatever format we use. And then also council wanted to give people direction on evacuation as well. So I plan on doing that in 2023. So we did do our, we did do two DEA prescription drug take backs. We just did one last Saturday for 2023, but we did two of those in 2022. And as you're aware, that we take prescription medications 24/7 at the police department as well. Because we're just trying to keep medications that are expired out of streams, out of children's hands or pets or whatever, whatever dangers that can happen. The Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute. If you're wondering who Sherman Block was, that, he was the sheriff of LA County for a long time. He was a great leader. And there's an institute, a post-certified institute associated with him. And our Sergeant Paul Gooden attended that course. It's extensive. It, it, there's more in-depth detail of the curriculum in the annual report. So he's, he completed that in 2022. And right now, our Sergeant Bee Gao, she actually just started it. So in 2024, we'll be talking about her completion of the same institute. The Rob, Robert Presley Institute of Criminal Investigation Core Course, that's a, an 80-hour course that police officers attend. And it's, it's like the basics 101 of police investigations, covering search warrants, crime scenes, interviews, everything. And we now have two officers that have completed that. Brian Deaton, our corporal, completed that about a year ago. And then most recently, our detective, and I never, we never had a detective in my time at least, 12 years here as chief, Anthony Garber, just completed that course as well. And the new detective, as you're aware, that Carrie Peoples retired. She was the custodian of evidence. I just kind of thinking out of the box, when replaced her with a police officer upon her retirement and created that detective position. It's a good thing for our city. It's already, it's, we're already solving more crimes having a detective already. So it's off to a good start. Our officer training, so we, we're always training at Catati Police Department. So in 2022, that's some of the training, not all, but the highlights of bias and racial profiling, strategic communication, which is kind of a fancy word for de-escalation, vehicle racing and modifications that has to do associated with, with sideshow enforcement. We had somebody attend a supervisory course, the LGBTQ training, community awareness, train the trainer, IA investigations, human trafficking, use of force, force option simulator, criminal investigations, ICI course, and then filtering officer update, interview and interrogation, critical incident response, and elder dependent, elder-dependent adult abuse. And again, that's just, these are just highlights. Our dispatchers, they also, they're post-certified as well. They continue to receive training as well through, throughout the year. So we were happy to, to bring in suicide callers and crisis training that all the dispatchers have had. Public records request training, cultural diversity, active shooter training for dispatchers, and advanced communication training officers training. So we do have a recruit training officer at the academy, and that is Sergeant Tyler Wardle. So we're happy to have somebody involved up there at the academy from Catati. As you know, we have automated license plate readers. In 2022, we recovered 14 stolen vehicles. It's funny, so Officer Ryan Sullivan, that's kind of his niche. So he recovered 12 of those stolen vehicles in a nine-month period. And so he received a 10-851 award, 10-851's the vehicle code for stolen vehicle. So he was recognized by the higher patrol and AAA, and given a pin that he now wears on his uniform. So Tyler Wardle, who's our sergeant, he received now his fourth M.A.T. award. So he's the top DUI enforcer of the city. And to get that award, it's not just the, the amount of arrest. There's a formula where you have to have convictions following the arrest as well. And those are complicated and time-consuming, involve search warrants for blood draws when people won't give consent. It sometimes involves no alcohol, but other drugs. So very comp, it can be a very complicated investigation at times. We do have special assignments for officers at our city. So we have our traffic officer, Brian Rinky. He's assigned to the motor, writing tickets. We have our detective now. And then we also have our K-19, Brian Deaton and Remo. And I'm happy to say that we renewed our dispatch agreement with Sonoma State University PD. We're very proud of that here at our city. And I can't believe it's six years already, but it's going to be five more years now. So we upped our contract. Assembly Bill 481 policy was adopted by a council. That's the military equipment use. So the command vehicle, it was deployed twice. It was deployed to the city of Hillsburg. They had a gang shooting on their beach along the Russian River that's in the city limits. And we assisted with that and brought the command van up, turn on all the, the lights because it got dark. So people could see. Hillsburg was very appreciative of us bringing the van up there and helping them out with their investigation. It also got deployed in, in the city of Sebastopol. There was a domestic violence case there where somebody was stabbed. It was, it was this very serious domestic violence case. And we deployed the van there and helped them with evidence collection. So in 2022, the command van was deployed twice. I'm, I'm happy to say that the beanbag shotgun was not deployed. There was no use for that, which is a good thing. Part of AB 481 is the cost of set items. I can tell you that with the, with the shotgun because we just, we have new officers, we just train them while we're on duty. And it doesn't need a firearms range because it's not a real firearm that we can do in the back parking lot. Really was no cost associated with having the beanbag shotgun. And the, the command van would just be really the cost of fuel and officers overtime deploying the van. So that's AB 481. Our neighborhood officer meetings, we had two. We, we have two a year. So we did host those biannual meetings on Zoom. In the future, I've been talking to the city manager, in the future, I would like to have a hybrid option for the officer area meetings. So we started with no Zoom because we didn't know what Zoom was, right? Then we went to Zoom. But just to, to make it available for more, for more people, I would like to see a hybrid meeting in the future. So no promise on when we'll get that technology in place, but that's at least my intentions. We transitioned from the Uniform Crime Report to NiBRS. NiBRS is the National Incident-Based Reporting System. That's crime stats. Big change on that. And I, I remember warning council last year that this change was, was coming. So in the annual report, I stayed away from, from comparing NiBRS informations to previous years of UCR because it was just going to be convoluted. So I promised that in 2024, what we'll do is we'll have the 2023 stats aligned with the 2024 stats so you can compare. Otherwise, it would be kind of apples and oranges and confusing to see. But that's in, but the NiBRS information is in the annual report. I think we're all happy to say that we had the first electric patrol car. I know I am. It's working out great. So our 12-hour shifts, even, even the car deployed at night with all, with the LEDs and in-car computer, everything, the spotlight, with a 12-hour shift, the most, the battery's been drained is like in the 40% tile. We charge it to 90%. And again, it's just dropped to like 40-some percent in a 12-hour shift, which is, it's working great. I have chiefs tell me, well, what happens with the public safety power shut-offs? And I said, the chargers are associated with the backup generator. And they're like, oh, I didn't think about that. So anyways, I think the other chiefs are jealous because I get asked a lot of questions. We have a second Tesla, but it's not outfitted. We're waiting for the equipment. And then in May, we're not just staying with Tesla. We are going to receive two Ford Mach-Es. And those will be outfitted. So we'll have a total of four electric patrol cars here soon. Community outreach, as you know, we do coffee with a cop. We're moving out of COVID, thankfully. We had our national night out, which was well-attended, usually is. We'll be doing that this year, of course. We did our toy drive. And then I'm not sure if you know or not, but for Thomas Page Academy, that every year we do a school supply drive. We did that again as well. And at our last council meeting, you guys got to witness the Exchange Club give Officer Rinky his award for Sonoma County Officer of the Year. That award has been given out 60 years. Catati's been the awardee three times, 1981, 1987, and then now. So calls for service, this is interesting. So the, the purple graph, I guess, lack of colors. That's officer initiated. So in 2019, it was, it was high. Below is the, is our calls for service, like from the public. So there's not a lot of change in, in the, the, the lower graph. But the officer activity is different. I think that in 2021, COVID had something to do with that. We, we had the sheriff like, don't bring people to jail. You know, we don't want COVID in our jail. Moving into 2022, we're coming out of COVID. I think part of that changed and diminished in activity by officers is staffing shortage. So we've lost some officers, as you know, that are lateral. But then on top of that, we've hired, we've backfilled an officer, for example, that wasn't successful. A lot of people cannot do this job, frankly. And so we've lost people in training as well. And then just, just recruiting right now, not a lot, a lot of people want to be police officers right now in the climate, to be frank. And recently, all the Sonoma chiefs, we were together for a training. And we all learned at the same time that the, the city of Alameda gives a $75,000 hiring bonus to be a police officer in that city. And that, which I was surprised, but then, and so then I read some more and I was like looking for experience, like this is a lateral police officer, right? No. This is a inexperienced person can go to the city of Alameda for a $75,000 hiring bonus. We're used to seeing 25, 35,000, but I've never seen one that high. So I was surprised. Traffic citations. So when, when you see warnings up there, that, that's the orange part of the pie, right? So remember, that's a, that's a warning citation. That's not, you get pulled over and, and the police officer just says, you know, please put your phone down or whatever, whatever the reason is, right? These are actually citations. I've said it before, I, and I repeated to my cops, nobody's a bigger fan than a, than a warning citation than me. I really don't like warnings. I think a warning should be a citation. And I like it because what our citizens see, somebody pull over and they see this, they just assume they're getting a real ticket, right? The person, the person, you know, has to sign for this. And then it goes into our records management system. So if we have a repeat offender for the same thing, the officer will know that this person's received a written warning for this already. And I'm a fan of it because these citations are so expensive. And I don't know how many, I don't know how many times since I've been the chief, people tell me, if you, chief, if you want to make some money, go to East Catati or wherever, because you'll kill it. Well, no police department should be in the business of making money, for one. And two, there's no, we don't make money off of traffic citations. The, the lion's share of it goes to county, state, DMV, all those administrative fees, that very little comes back to the city, just so you know. But if you can see the grand total, that is 1,268, 88. That's a long ways for me to read. And the majority are moving violations. And then there's a few mini codes, as you can see, and then parking violations and warnings. So this is the NiBRS, this is the crime summary. Again, the, the annual report will reflect the, the graphs and the stats. But leading person crimes were simple assault and aggravated assault. Leading property crimes were vandalism, theft of cars and car parts, car parts, Cadillac converters, right? Burglary and fraud. Other crimes were drug-related DUI and weapons offenses. And then we do targeted traffic enforcement. You know, we have a downtown ordinance against the big trucks coming through town. So we, we focus on that. Pedestrian crossing, vehicle enforcement, distracted driving vehicle enforcement, to include cell phones. Our beat enforcement, and then speed enforcement in certain areas of the city. So here's the safety stats. I know my, my photo's like right in the middle of the, the corner of some of the text. But by far, just interesting, by far, the, the calls that come in are dispatch. So there's 200. Oh, there we go. Magic. Thank you, city clerk. Yeah, the, the calls come in through dispatch, 198 of them. Yeah, the, the calls come in through dispatch, hundred ninety eight of them. Compared to the, the, the total of two hundred and five calls, so the majority are coming through dispatch. These are triozed by our police dispatchers. You see on there, we added Sonoma State to the safe team, we, me and Damian, city manager, we think that we're really the only. Local law enforcement agency paired with a, with university police on a model like this with, with our safety. We're not seeing any other in California so far. Uh, again, that's Runner Park, us and then Sonoma State now. And of course we dispatched them, so our, our police dispatchers are trained when to. Send safety instead of an officer or when to send both. But so the, we got counseling requests up there for public assist, I know that's pretty generic, hundred and fifty nine. So me and the city manager, we're, we're working with safe to, to break out. What public assists exactly are in more detail? Because we want to know and I know you want to know. I can tell by the sun here, I can tell by your expressions that you want to know, as do I, but so we're going to improve on. What a public assist exactly is, but I can. I can tell you that our police officers are happy that safe is here, I'm happy that safe's here. I think it's a good option. To divert calls away from police officers that could otherwise trigger somebody that. That doesn't need to be triggered. And. Yeah, so just looking forward to using them more and more and we all know they're twenty four seven now as well. And they have their new van. And then the second van is being outfitted. Now in Catati, actually, I saw it recently. Uh, so this is the, the racial identity, identity profiling act with the data. So we started collecting data in July of twenty twenty one. That was six months. Earlier than we were obligated to do so, but the, the law enforcement agencies in the dispatch consortium. Which is easier to explain, it's everybody except for Sebastopol Hillsburg and Cloverdale. All the other agencies are in, in the consortium. And so we agreed to, to start collecting the Ripa data six months. Early because we have the shared record management system. So we started collecting that. So with our department, we had one thousand seven forty six stops. So that equals averages out to hundred and sixteen stops per Catati officer. It exceeds all other police departments in the consortium, including the sheriff's office. And including the sheriff's office contract cities. So your police officers. Are out there stopping cars and doing traffic enforcement. And contacting people more than the other agencies, just so we're aware. The most likely stop for a traffic offense. Is, I'm sorry, the most likely to stop is a traffic offense. That's what we stop for, the least likely to stop is for reasonable suspicion. Sixty six percent of the stops are men and there's, and they have the age called out twenty five to forty four. Basically sixty one percent of the stops were white, twenty seven percent were Hispanic. Five and a half were black and remaining six point four other, the percentage on that. The most common result was a warning, forty four, call it forty five percent. Citation thirty percent or. Or citation eleven point one, so when I see ticket and citation, so this. This Ripa is new and so it's a little confusing because it's so new. And so I'm just digesting this as it goes. It's, it's, it's pretty complicated and it's a lot of numbers. So compared to other agencies. We write more infractions and less misdemeanors or felonies. So to me, that data means that we're up, we're writing the traffic citations, which are infractions. Not necessarily criminal. Hundred and eighty five searches, most commonly were, were parole. So the data is calling it parole, there's not very many people on parole anymore. There are, but there's fewer and fewer, so there's. There's parole in the Ripa data sense could be probation or post release community service, right? And parole, so those three categories. So the most common people that we, the most commonly searched people are people that are on probation, PRCS or parole. And. Or an incident that happened twenty eight percent. Uh, least likely of. So twenty eight percent is least likely of the agencies to request consent to search. Damian, can you help me on that one, I'm at. Oh, got it, yeah. So the other, the other twenty eight percent counsel, sorry, is related to a, to an arrestor incident. Our point is that compared to the other agencies. They're more likely to request consent to search. So what I'm sharing with you is that our, the majority of our searches are somebody that has a search clause, parole. Probation, PRCS compared to other agencies that are doing. Requests for consent to search. So that means that we're, we're doing. The art, our, the lion shares of our searches are a legal search, not that consent shirts are illegal. It's just a more solid search.
Chief, the vice mayor would like to ask a question, would that be okay?
Sure.
Just thank you, just a clarification, I had trouble understanding in the Ripa data. It has two different characters that you already mentioned, one is citation for infraction and one is infield site and release.
Yeah.
Can you just, I couldn't figure out what the difference between those two was.
So I'm as confused as you are on some of these. Yeah, some of these separations, to me, they sounded, they sound the same. Do you remember the difference on that?
It was, you know, you were kind of digging into the background, like, you know, documentation on Ripa and it. The infield site and release seemed to be like traffic tickets that kind of, where you're citing someone in the. So it read in theory, when you give someone a traffic, traffic ticket, you could, you could take them to jail, right? Because it's like a, but they don't usually do that, right? There's cite you and then you release, they release you with a guarantee to appear.
Yeah, yeah, I think it may have also been a warrant arrest, so a lot, so a lot of times when somebody has a warrant. If somebody has a warrant, we don't automatically just take you to county jail. If it's a warrant for a low, low level offense and it's a low bail. We, we can cite you out for that and I think that that's what we determined was part of that as well.
Yeah, there was, there was arrests with warrant and without warrant, there was site and release and there was infractions. Infractions were the, like, I believe the background documentation called it infractions for municipal code violations, so.
Citation for infraction is what it calls it.
Yeah, so like, I, I mean, we're not totally sure to be honest, but, but it seemed like what it was, was it was a citation for. Like a munich code violation. Of some type, so. I don't know what would be an example.
So an open container downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's a good, so vice mayor, it's a, it's a good question, it's a fair question, but. I'm being transparent, this stuff is confusing and it's new.
Is it sort of just how the officer enters it into the data too? So if they're not clear on which one's which, it might go in either way.
Exactly right, and so officers, for example, are supposed to perceive people's race, they're supposed to perceive their gender. Yeah.
Yeah, I think there was another example of that where there was these, uh, in the data, there was these felony warnings. And the chief and I were like, what the hell does that mean? Why would you give someone a warning?
Why are my cops warning you, right? We asked the police officer, he kind of went. With, and they, and our dispatchers thought that, yeah, that was like. We just, I mean, so this is only, remember, this is six months of data. It started in July and we got, we're all trying to figure out how to collect this, we're training our. Dispatchers, how to, how to decipher it and our cops, how to do the, the, the. The data entry. Like, you know, I stopped this person and I did, I, I think they're whatever race, I think they're whatever gender and. So there was a great learning curve, so. I believe that. So we'll get better at this reporting out, so for twenty twenty two, we're going to have the whole year. Of Ripa data collection, right? And then we'll have six months of experience prior to that one year of, and then so it should be a little more accurate and we should be able to explain it better. As we move along. Uh, but remember, so Ripa that, so Ripa, this is a, this is a, a bill. By the legislature for law enforcement agencies to collect this data. And provide it to the state of California for a future. Maybe legislation, whatever. And so. You're going to, we're finding that police chiefs and sheriffs, because I go to Cal chiefs and go to meetings, we're all. Just kind of soaking the sand and figuring it out, but we are doing. Our city is, are, we are doing our role, we are. We are reporting Ripa data and collecting the data per the bill, so I can tell you that.
And you brought up a good point about perceived because they're not allowed to ask, so it is just. What you perceive, which one person or another might perceive differently.
And then. Me and the city manager, we, we pulled in a police officer, we were like quizzing him on. You know, because he's a boots on the ground person and I asked the question like. What, like what percentage of the time do you know who you're stopping? In other words, race, for example, it's like. Like seventy five percent of the time, right? Because it's tinted windows, it's dark at night. I mean, sorry, seventy five percent, they don't know, right? Because darkness, tinted windows, they're behind, you know, where they're behind a car, they, they can't. They don't know who, what their gender is until. They approach them, so that's post stop and this is all about stop data.
Okay, did you have a question?
Yeah, so. I, I saw a lot about how it's new and how people interpret things differently and. Issues about how the ACS is so different from Ripa and I understand all of those caveats. But given that it is perception, if the intention of this. Measuring the disparity is to determine. You know, unconscious bias, then what they perceive the person to be that they pulled over. It doesn't matter if they actually are that or not, right? If they perceive that they are and they pull them over, then that could be bias. Could not, but it could be, right? And so one of the things that I was really hoping to see is, you know, when we see numbers like. You know, point nine percent of the population is black, but almost six percent is pulled over. You know, what, how are we addressing the disparity aside from training around the numbers to make sure they're entered in properly? Um, are, do we have any kind of, you know, what are we doing to address that racial disparity in our town?
So I would, I would share with you that that's, that's based on a population number, right? But most of these, by far, the majority of these stops are vehicles, right? So Catati is, we're the hub, we, we're literally the hub of Sonoma County, we're called that for a reason, right? Because we got the one sixteen, we got the one oh one, we got, or, or Wood Highway coming up. That's not our demographic, that's not really our population, that traveling, those traveling automobiles.
So, so then is, is that data collected, like where the people are from?
No.
So then I'm not sure we can use that as, you know, that we can say, well, because they could be from somewhere else that we don't need to worry about it. I feel like we, we do still need to worry about it.
Yeah, well, I didn't say we should worry about it.
No, I'm just asking, what are we doing about it? Right? And maybe you don't have an answer right now and that's fine, I'm just, I'm hoping that, I just want to make sure that we keep that in the fore.
Yeah, I would just add that it's, it's early, you know, it's, we're only looking at the first six months. And I, um, looking at the data, honestly, I don't know, so the stop data, what you're talking about. The ethnicities of the stop data. I honestly.
Packet page thirty nine.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, looking at it, it, it might say something or it might say nothing at all, I, I don't know what it means yet. There's lots of different ways that, that data could or could not be accurate. To me, at least what's, I mean, this is my own, my own opinion is that. I think what's more meaningful is what happens after a stop. And that we need a little more data for to track that, because at that point, you're a hundred percent. This whole, you know, what someone self identifies as versus what they're perceived as, that goes away because once someone stopped. It doesn't matter anymore, it's whatever the officer perceives that person to be in the following, the treatment that follows. That's, that to me at least seems more relevant than who actually gets pulled over.
But, but it's, it's my understanding, not, not just from this, but the reason this exists is because people of color get pulled over more. Than white people in general, right? So, so that that bias goes before, it goes with the perception, right? Or the perception of a threat or the perception of, you know, that the situation is dangerous or what, you know, lots of different varieties of. Opportunity for this bias and I'm not even suggesting that necessarily there is, I'm just saying that the, the data that we do have so far suggests that there is. And so I understand that the data may not be wholly accurate, but I just want to make sure that. You know, that we. Recognize that the data is suggesting there is an issue. And so I would just want to make sure that we're addressing it and that we have a plan of what we're going to do about it.
Yeah, and then, like I said. For the next report that comes out from DOJ, right? Because all this goes to DOJ, we'll have a full year of twenty twenty two and we'll see what it looks like. It might be more accurate numbers. And. Yeah, time will tell, so that would be at the end of this year. Yeah, I think.
And the calendar year?
Toward the, yeah, that's when DOJ is supposed to come out, so the twenty twenty, the full, this is. The stats we have right now are twenty one, six months. This is, this does not include twenty twenty two, the whole year, so at the end of this year. Or toward the end of the year, they say fall, but it didn't happen in the fall last year, so that's why I'm going to tell you fall. Uh, we'll have a whole year of data collection. Fewer mistakes in data collection, right? Because we'll have been better at it, so we'll see what, what the report says for the end of the year.
Okay, so just to be clear, then there, there is no plan to address the data we have right now, we're going to. The, the proposal is to wait until the end of the year to address it, is that what I'm hearing, to get the further data first?
But to address specifically what?
The disparity that's on this page?
There's not a plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, just for more broadly speaking, I'd say the plan is to continue to collect data and, and look at it and follow the data if there's problems. And address it.
So, continue. So sixty stops produced contraband, Muslim, most commonly drugs, paraphernalia, thirty six percent or drugs, thirty eight percent. And then limited initial data drawn any conclusions is difficult, but the police department is committed to data driven. It's covered up, but. So it's what to improve and serve the community better, so. Councilman Rivers, it's what we, and Damian just told you the last point.
Yeah, my, my point is the data is already telling us there's an issue and I, I'm, I'm not a favor of just waiting to collect more data. I'm, I'm in favor of addressing the data we have, but I understand what you're saying, I'm just sharing my opinion.
Okay, so use of force. Um, I'm happy to say that we have zero Ursus to report, and Ursus is, um, significant use of force where, uh, where a police officer uses deadly force or fires a firearm or somebody significantly injured. So we had none of those. And when I say use of force, let me just clarify, use of force for us is anything beyond simple handcuffing. So for example, if we, we got a drunk driver stopped, they're drunk, they're agitated. The officer is going to handcuff them for their safety, to get the person calmed down or whatever. That person pulls away or whatever, now the, now the officers come in, you know, starting to do control holds or whatever, that's, even that's a use of force. So you're clear. Um, so out of, out of ten thousand four hundred and eleven events, uh, there was three hundred and ninety-five arrests. So out of three hundred and ninety-five arrests, twenty-nine events were, were use of force. So anything other than handcuffing. That's a similar number to the previous year. And then, um, use of force by reason, so majority are affecting, um, an arrest or incident. And then, yeah, speaking of police, there we go. One was a fifty-one-fifty subject, combative, uh, outside agency assist, that's, that's, you know, providing backup to Runner Park, the sheriff's office, and the state, whoever. Um, and then the other four could be like a drawing a firearm, um, like doing a building search or something like that. But this is called out in the annual report, there's, there's a graph and everything associated with that. Uh, so complaints, um, we had nine formal complaints for twenty-twenty-two, the year before there were ten. So again, these numbers are pretty consistent. So somebody can complain in many ways, uh, it's wide open, they can complain online, they can, they can call, they can eat, sometimes they, they'll email me. They can call in the department, they can come in the lobby and get a form, but it is wide open for people to, to make it easy for somebody to submit a complaint. So with the initial allegation on these complaints, three were procedural, so they didn't agree with what happened on, whether they got a ticket or they're arrested or whatever it was. Six were allegations of conduct unbecoming. Um, the outcomes of the investigation, seven were unfounded, two were withdrawn. I would like to point out that if a complaint's withdrawn, it's not like we just toss it, we still vet it out. But two of these complaints, people were, they withdrew, sometimes body worn cameras are, are friend and, um, to show people, um, you know, what happened on, with audio visual stories that we have. I will call out that, um, so we did, we did have a complaint in twenty-twenty-one. Um, it was conduct unbecoming, and it took a while for the investigation to, um, be completed. So we did have a police officer that we did sustain allegations against the police officer, who was formerly disciplined in twenty-twenty-two. It occurred in twenty-twenty-one, but he was disciplined in twenty-twenty-two. So I just wanted to share that with you. Um, so the new laws for twenty-twenty-two, so the, the new laws for police, they, they are coming in fast and furious, there are so many on the books, I got my city attorney over here, nodding his head. It's hard to keep up. I want to, I want to talk about Senate Bill Two, it's not in our annual report. Um, because it's a Cattati thing, really, it's a state-of-California thing. This is something I've never seen in my career, which it's been a long one. Police officers were now licensed, we have a license, we never had a license before. What does that mean? Means you can lose, and so post can, police officer standards and training, they can revoke or suspend a police officer's license. So if we have any sheriff or police chief in California, if we have, um, an allegation against a police officer for serious misconduct, which includes a lot of things, it could be, that they're biased, that they're, um, they abuse their power, that they, they're accused of excessive use of force. We're mandated to report them to post, and they actually, for twenty, they rolled out in January one, twenty-twenty-three, it went live, there's actually a portal that we would load up that information of that police officer into the system, so post receives it. And then we have to give post, um, the investigation. If a police officer decided, I'm going to resign, we have to, doesn't matter, we still have to complete the, the internal affairs investigation, whether the police officer uh, resigns or not, and provide that to post. And then post has, has a committee that will review these um, misconduct allegations. And if it's warranted, they will revoke a police officer's license to be a police officer. And then the reason I talk about resignations, a police officer in the past could like resign from an agency, because they're in trouble, for lack of terms. Because they've resigned, the internal affairs investigation used to, would stop because, well, they're, they're resigned, they're leaving. And then they would reappear, like, maybe in another county as a police officer. So with Senate Bill Two, that's not going to happen. So not only does the investigation have to be, uh, completed and provided to post, uh, even if the officer resigned, post could still take that license away from that police officer. So it, it's significant, it's a big change. So, Mayor, that's what I had.
Okay. Then, did you want to start with questions?
Sure, thanks. So, questions now and then discussion after public comment, or just mix it all, okay, questions? Um, can you real quick just run down the department personnel? Not names, just how many in each position, what are the positions and how many people?
Oh, so I have an org chart, yeah, in the packet. I'll go to that. So at the top, you could, you could see, I'm sorry, council, I'm on, uh, page fifty-two. For the councilman's question, so, um, I'm at the top there, the organizational chart, Katie Holderman, she's almost full-time person. She's a thirty-two-hour-a-week, um, she's our, um, professional services aide, she does livescan, she does a lot of collateral duties for the department. Though, as you know, the lieutenant position is vacant, has been vacant. We talked, because we talked about this in strategic planning. To the, to the left, we have our three sergeants. We now have our detective that, that answers to the sergeants. I won't count the volunteers and cadets, you know, or personnel. Then, um, we have, um, Corporal Deaton, and of course his companion Remo. And then there's a corporal position vacant. And then the, what the officers, um, we got, in addition to the detective and the corporal, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, six, but then we have one reserve officer. So right now, what's vacant is we have two police officer vacancies currently right now. And then, um, when you look at the right side of the organizational chart, I am happy to say, because not all chiefs could say that their dispatch centers are fully staffed. Uh, because that's another challenge is, is, uh, hiring and retaining nine-one-one dispatchers.
Great, thanks. Um, so, did I understand you just say that the detective is now the custodian of evidence?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Um, have we had any sideshow issues in town, really? I, I know, we are trying to keep them out, but, okay.
Yeah, so I call it their warm-up, so, um, Santa Rosa seems to be the, the focus. They, we've caught them, uh, doing activity at Lowe's. And we've also caught them at the, uh, car wash behind Me Pueblo by the, yeah, the car wash, the, the one on Wilford.
Yeah.
Not the one on Commerce. When I say warming up, so they're gathering up and they're, they're moving their way to, um, to Santa Rosa, but we haven't had a big sideshow in our city yet, thankfully.
I'm sorry, these questions are all over, I was just writing things down as you were going, and I wanted to ask, because I want to understand how it all works. Um, so when cities help each other out with mutual aid, is there then a billing later, or do we just kind of hand, we just have faith that it'll all work out in the wash? You know, when we sent the, the command van up to Healdsburg, and we had to pay some officers overtime to run that, we just trust that at some point we'll get aid to make it up for it?
Yes, and so that, that's, and that's really the national and state incident command system is set up that way.
Okay.
For mutual aid, so we do not receive a bill, um, from any agencies. So the sheriff's office, a couple of years ago, did try to get me to sign an MOU for investigations, and that's when I rallied the five smaller agencies. And we agreed to do our own investigations. So we're not being charged by other agencies for mutual aid.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, are the Maki's going to be easier to outfit than the Teslas were? Is there going to be the same figuring it all out all over again?
I think it's going to be easier. So I was at a, uh, convention and they had Lear, our outfitter, our, had one outfitted for the Nevada Highway Patrol.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I think it's, I think it's going to be a little smoother, and, um, I'm interested to compare the two models and, on their functionality and, and what we think of them.
Great. Um, do you have any idea how our complaint, complaint numbers or distribution complaints compare to other jurisdictions? It's a very small percentage of stops, you know, it's a tiny number, so it's just hard to know.
Yeah, honestly, I don't know, I haven't really asked other chiefs, like, what their numbers are. I can tell you, though, that when the Press Democrat did a big story that we had body worn cameras, that they dropped significantly.
And same with use of force, that, that's a statistic that's been around for a lot longer. Do, do you know how our numbers compare, like, as a percentage of stops?
I think that's an average. Yeah, I think that's.
I mean, I, I forget your, your acronym for the more serious use of force, I was happy to see that.
Yes.
Ursus, yes, I was happy to see that at zero. And then finally, can you fill me in on what pretextual stops are? That was, that was discussed in, as, uh, with some of the recommendations from the RIPA task force was, was to come up with.
That's, yeah, no, that's, that's, a, a police officer seeing a, a violation, like a taillight out or whatever, knowing that this is the reason we're going to stop this car, it's a presection of the stuff.
As opposed to what? What other kinds of stops are there with that, other than having a reason for it?
Be, so that could be suspicion. So you could, there could be a, uh, there could be a business, it's closed, industrial area is three in the morning, nobody's working there. So a stop like that. Yeah, a drunk driver swerving, things like that.
Okay, uh, when I've read the term before, I, I've gotten the impression it, it has more to do with, it, it's like, a pretext is, that's not the real reason, you know, you stop somebody for a busted taillight in order to ask to search because you're on a fishing expedition, that, and I don't know if that's a, that's sort of how it's come across to me in the past, is, is pretext is like a, a reason that's not the real reason, you know, it, it gives you the legal right to stop somebody, but isn't the real reason you're stopping. And I if I read that paragraph right, that's kind of where the RIPA board is urging departments to, to, uh, to come up with procedures, you know, that don't just give, give officers right to, every, every illegal, small thing you see to initiate a stop, unless that is something that you always stop somebody for, you know, so if you don't always stop somebody for broken taillights, then, so I'm just curious if that, um, pretextual stops is a thing you talk about, like, under what conditions we, we stop people? Um, and, and do we use minor infractions as reasons to stop somebody in order to maybe try to find something else?
We would.
You say we would do that?
Yes.
Okay, and under what circumstances? Why would you stop some people for a broken taillight and not others?
Well, you, I mean, if you're, it's a, it's a busy night and it's a, you see a broken taillight and you're down reports and all that, you're probably going to look the other way. If it's three in the morning and broken taillight is in the industrial section where all businesses are closing, it's a good reason for a stop to see if they're stealing from businesses.
But it sounds like, from, from the data anyway, like, your department's policy isn't to, um, routinely ask for permission to search when there's, when there's not a, you know, a probation or parole sort of, uh, reason to search.
Yeah, I don't understand what you.
Well, it's, so, so in, in the circumstance where you stop somebody, um,
Oh, they could be on probation or parole, once you get them stopped.
Right, once they're stopped, if they're on probation or parole, you could search, but it sounds from the data like we don't do a lot of, if they're not asking for permission to search anyway. Is that true? We don't?
It's less than other agencies.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thanks, that's all.
So, I have some questions. So, um, I know we're not the friendly city, we're Cattati, for the cities up, uh, north a little bit. But I was a little concerned with the number of stops per officer compared to other cities, where at one sixteen, um, for the data, RIPA stops per sworn officer versus the other cities, uh, including Santa Rosa. Um, and it also said that the total stops were seventeen thirty-six, which is large in the communities of Windsor and Sonoma combined, and close to what Runner Park does, which is also larger than us. So I, I just had a question about, is there other duties that other officers do aside from doing stops, you know, that, that would make our numbers seem higher or appear higher than others?
So I think our numbers are, well, our officers are doing a lot of things, um, writing reports after arrests, doing investigations. But, so I share with our officers that, so the biggest, I've been the chief here for twelve and a half years. The ongoing citizens' concern are traffic violations, speeding and not yielding for pedestrians and all these safety things. People are concerned about traffic safety, not just cars, but pedestrians and bicyclists. And so, and, and I make that clear, that it's a priority for our city. And so our officers are out there doing a lot of traffic enforcement. And frankly, the, the, the cities, like the contract cities that you mentioned, they're not doing that. They're not out there writing citations and stopping cars like Cattati police officers are. In my opinion, this is a good problem to have.
Isn't it true that Windsor and Sonoma are also serviced by the sheriff's department?
Yeah, they're contract cities with, with the sheriff's office, yeah. And they, they're not stopping near the people that we are.
Yeah, and, and the numbers also included Petaluma's, which is, you know, fifty-six stops per officer. Santa Rosa, thirty-seven stops per officer, and ours was like one sixteen, so that was a question that I had.
Yeah, I, I could, I would comment on Santa Rosa, Santa Rosa, they're busy. They're very busy, uh, with significant crime, and I think that's, um, part of that statistic. I don't have the answer for Windsor or Sonoma, they should be stopping a lot of cars like, like we're stopping.
Some, in those figure agencies, they have special, some, like maybe more special assignments.
Yeah, they have motors, but they also, all the cities have had a police officer shortage, including Santa Rosa, but, but, but Santa Rosa is a busy, busy place.
Yeah, when I was looking also at the result of stops, it looks like- Yeah. And when I was looking also at the result of stops, it looks like we. We have the least non-action. So we always, you know, it seems like we do more citations, more. More warnings, more infield site release than the other, all the other jurisdictions. So those are my, my things I wanted to bring up.
I have some questions written down. First of all. The, maybe this is a question for Damian, I'm not sure, but in the staff report, it said that there were. Suggestions that the RIPA board made about our, about civilian complaint processes. And you'd said in the report, we're going to kind of look at those suggestions. We already do some of them, but. I, I just wondered if you could provide any more details about what, like what were their recommendations? Cause I couldn't, I had trouble tracking it down, if, if you remember.
One of them is having online reporting for complaints. I know that and we, we do have that. So anybody can go to our website and. And submit a form, form or complaint. And they do come in that way, but I know that that was one of the ones called out by the RIPA board.
Yeah, there, so, so quite a few of the ones that are called out as recommendations we've already implemented. Uh, one of the big ones that they point out, I guess, because this is a law, but we don't, anyway. That you're supposed to sign it, you know, like sign the complaint before you turn it in, but we don't do that. We don't require anyone to do that. We can take complaint from any. And the web form verbally on the telephone, walk-ins, we'll take them anyway. We get them.
Yeah, we take them.
We don't turn them away because someone hasn't signed the form. I guess some agencies do that because apparently there's something, some law in the books that says they're supposed to do that.
Oh, okay.
And. Yeah, there's a couple I don't, I mean, there was only a small group of them that I, that we needed to look into more because it was kind of obscure and I just needed more research to know what it meant. And if. It meant something for us.
Okay, I can look into that later.
There's Laura, there's actually in the, in their recommendations, there's a couple pages like. Ability to define things, the level, the grade level that, that they should be. So that people can understand them and providing the forms in different languages if needed. Okay, I mean.
Thank you. I got that page six. Okay, another question. It has to do, it's connected closely with Councilmember Ford's question about the pretextual stops. I'm just wondering where would a broken taillight show up in our stats? Would that be a traffic stop or?
A traffic stop.
Okay.
So somebody could be, yes, and somebody could be. Could receive a fix it ticket for that if the officer has time. Or warning, like you're almost home, fix your taillight. So there could be different outcomes.
Okay.
For a stop on them, like something like that.
Okay. And I know that RIPA doesn't break down the type of traffic stop that happens. So I'm just wondering if you have any. Maybe if this isn't possible right now, but do you have any sense for the breakdown of like what? You know, what proportion of our traffic stops are those types of mechanical issues versus real like traffic safety issues like speeding or running a stop sign or something like that?
So looking at the officer citations, the vehicle codes are, they just kind of. They're everywhere. They run the gamut. So there's a lot of mechanical violations. There's a lot of people talking on cell phones. Sometimes we do speed enforcement. Sometimes people don't yield to citizens in a crosswalk. So. They vary. I don't have the percentages, but I know that they. They vary greatly.
Okay. The targeted enforcements that were in the staff report, I was really pleased to see, see those in there. I was wondering if in. Future, like next year or in the mid-year report, if you could include a little more information about like what, what the outcome of those was. How many trucks did we catch downtown, you know, stuff like that?
We can do that.
And then. Cause I get people contacting me and it'd be nice to be able to tell them. Okay, you don't need to contact me anymore. We look what we're doing.
You regarding. Downtown truck ordinance or just?
Trucks, speeding.
Yeah, that's.
Trucks and speeding are the two that I hear about. And so it'd be nice to be able to show them like, here are some targeted enforcements we did, like here's, here was what the outcome of it was. Let's see. This is more of just a suggestion and question if this would be too hard for the next time we look at RIPA data. It was really great to have all of the Sonoma County cities and agencies there to compare with. I'd love to also see. If we could have like the overall California average and then possibly some comparable cities of our size in other areas of the state. Just because when I, I did pull up those big spreadsheets to look through and there were some areas where the entirety of Sonoma County, we all trend to, tend to. Group together on certain things. And so it looks in the report like we're just totally normal. Cause everyone's doing it this way. But then if you compare us to other cities throughout the state, the numbers are very different on some of them. So it'd be nice to be able to have some other comparisons outside.
Totally doable.
Okay, awesome. And. The last question I had, I, this was a little more involved. As I was looking through the data. Myself, I was just looking for anything that kind of jumped out and seemed, you know, where are we high?
RIPA data.
The RIPA data, yeah. Where are we high? Where are we low? And one thing that really. I don't know that I could draw any conclusion from this, but it was just interesting. One thing that jumped out at me was that we seem to be. Higher on the number of searches that we perform. Per, compared to the size of our population. Than other agencies and specifically I, I, I didn't know of a good way to. Find out if we were really out of whack because it was like a percentage of a percentage within the reports. It's hard to compare. So what I did is I took the absolute number of searches that we perform and divided that by our population and then compared that to other agencies. And based on that metric, we do four times more searches than Merit Park and three times more searches than Petaluma or Santa Rosa. On traffic stops. So we're searching quite a bit and. And then the other thing that we were kind of high on was specifically drug paraphernalia seizures. We, we cert, we seize. Four times more than Merit Park, five times more than Petaluma and seven times more than Santa Rosa on. And drug paraphernalia seizures. So it seems like we're doing a. I'm sorry, the searches I, I've not left out a really important point, which is that they're specifically parole and probation violation initiated searches. So we're, if, if you're on parole or. Probation or the other. Acronym that you mentioned.
PRCS.
PRCS, thank you. Then we're, it seems like we're making a big effort to. Initiate searches for people who are on probation and parole compared to other jurisdictions. So I'm wondering if that's intentional, like is that a, a strategy? And then seizing drug paraphernalia? Or is that just? Something that's happened and we didn't really realize that we were so high on that compared to other jurisdictions?
So I, I don't have the answer for other jurisdictions, but I can tell you that. That people that are on parole, probation, PRCS, these are convicted criminals. That commit crime to support habits. It's their career criminals often. And so we're finding them and we're searching them, making Katati a safer community.
So it is a, that's all I was asking. Is that on purpose? Like we're trying to do that on purpose?
Trying to.
Trying to do pretextual stops to, to fine parole, probation, people so we can search their vehicles. Is that something we're doing on purpose?
I would say no. So remember, we're the highest volume of stops, right? Per officer.
Right. We're twice, twice as many stops, but four times or seven times as many of these other things. So even, even proportional to that, we're doing it more than other. Agencies. Which I'm just, I'm just trying to see if, is that something you, you planned out and we're trying to do?
I didn't plan any of that. I would say, I would say that our officers are doing good police work, making Katati a safe place to be and to live.
Sorry, it looked like Damian was going to say something, but then.
Oh, I was, yeah, I was just going to say that it's, they, my understanding is they, you know, they make the stops and when they. When they, you know, run the license, that's when you find out, right, that they're on parole or PRCS. That's the, my understanding is that's the condition of their release from jail. So. Is that they're, is that they can be searched? So that's what happens.
All right. Thank you. I think that was all the questions that I had.
So to follow on to that. The implication was that they were. Pretextually stopped because of that, but what I'm hearing you say is you're not finding. That piece of information out until after they've been stopped, not before they've been stopped.
Yeah. So this is stop data.
Okay, all right. The way it was sounding, it was the other way. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I was just trying to find out if that was an intentional strategy, enforcement strategy that we had, or if it just sort of something that showed up in the data. I think I got my answer.
Okay, did you have a question?
I just like to ask, like. Vice Mayor Sparks was asking about the data on the speeding. The one I hear about all the time is the people not stopping for people crossing. Old railroad highway specifically from Charles, from the Charles Street Village in particular. And if there's any way we could, you know, not necessarily specific to that actual place, but just how many are like pedestrian involved. Citations, that'd be super helpful too. Thank you. And I do just want to comment, the little kids' pictures were adorable.
Any other questions? Yeah. Okay, then I will open this up for public comment. Anyone in the office, in the audience wish to comment? On the police report? Carol?
My name is Carol Williams and I'm a member of CORE, the community organized against racism. And. I read through the, the, all the reports this morning. It took me over an hour to get through the whole thing. And I still had questions and I appreciate all the. Work that, that has gone into this report and all the questions that the council members have. Raised, which were some of the same questions that I had when I was reading it. So. I, I think this is a good start in keeping. Information available and I appreciate all the work that's gone into doing this. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Can we open up public comment for the Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon at this time. We will start with Adrian Lobby. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. This has been really interesting and I appreciate there's, I know that we've asked the police chief to do more reporting and. The RIPA data of course is new as well. So I'm very encouraged to see. The accessibility of his report. And the exchange with the council people who obviously all of you did your homework and read things and thought about it and. It's just very, very encouraging to me. I have a couple of things I'd like to ask or say. Councilwoman Rivers brought up the issue that the disparities between. Proportion of various racial groups inside Katati and those who are being stopped is. Is a problem and we should be addressing it. We shouldn't wait. I agree. We can't wait another year. One solution might be to have a little spot survey because. Once you do stop someone, you can find out where they're from. And maybe. You know, you could do that over a month and see what, if, if it's true that a lot of this is because of people who are driving through town. On the conduct unbecoming and complaints questions. I don't, I would love to know a little more about what does conduct unbecoming, I assume to an officer mean? What are the basic things that have come up in this issue in, in this, in these complaints? And then I assume these investigations are being done locally by. I'd like to know that and. If that's really what we all think is the best place to deal with complaints, maybe we need some kind of outside. Investigator or oversight or something for complaints. I appreciate you, Mr. Ford, for talking about the pretextual stops. And. All of you, just all of you had really excellent questions and I look forward to hearing more about all of this soon. Thanks.
Mel Browning, you have the floor.
Hi, yes, thank you. I wanted to. Also say that I really appreciate this report and the details provided and that is really encouraging the conversation that we're able to have about it. I really appreciate a lot of our council members' questions and inquiring and wanting to know more about what these numbers mean. I also realized that it's very new, the, the RIPA data and trying to. Carry it out and trying to make sense of it. And I also am still concerned about the numbers and. I also have been concerned about just Sonoma County Police Department's response to folks kind of just bringing up their concerns. Because I think it is important to not just dismiss concerns. Yes, you don't know exactly what those numbers mean, but I think dismissing concerns is, is really problematic. I have been really kind of horrified by some of the comments on Facebook by police officer associations in Sonoma County about the RIPA data. And so I really hope to not see that done by Katati's police department. I really hope to not ever see those things repeated. That some of the other departments have had, because I think that's, it's just really dismissive of the experiences of a lot of folks in the community and. And it's concerning just in terms of it doesn't really make folks feel safe when, when they feel like folks are disparaging on issues of equity and things like that. So. I'm looking forward to knowing more and to hearing more about the data and what might be options to address it. And I really thank the council members for their questions because I didn't have to, you know, comment or ask questions about it because you all already did it. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I believe the first name is Jessica. Jessica Needham, you have the floor.
Hey, I just wanted to say that I appreciate everything you guys do. And I also follow the Katati Police Department on Instagram and I do see a lot of the search, search and seizure posts. And I do notice a lot of the time they're very similar locations and that that is close proximity to on off ramp. So I just wanted to point that out too. It might be something interesting to look at, like stop locations. And thanks for your time and effort. You guys are doing a great job. Thanks.
Not seeing any more hands. So Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes, Carol. Pardon me?
I have one more comment.
Sure, come on up. You did not use your, your whole time. So go ahead.
Occurred to me when people were, were, were speaking, which is, you know, wanting to know the location of people who are stopped. Well, you know, when you ask for their license, it has their address. So if. If that, that information is not being recorded, it could be, could be recorded very easily. So. That's just one more bit of information that you were concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. So Chief, a couple of things before we talk, can you? I believe that there was one incident of the officer unbecoming. So could you talk about the investigation and how that works and all? That was a question.
Of course, yeah. So on that, not all, but on that. Particular complaint. It rose to a level where it was a, was a serious. Matter of conduct unbecoming. Basically was, an officer was rude and discourteous. I could tell that it could potentially lead to discipline. And so I actually, I hired a outside firm. And they had a former police chief who's a PI investigate that for our city. And then ultimately. That, that PI, that investigator. Said that he believed that violations did occur and recommended that I sustain the violation. And after I read it and. Looked at all the evidence, I concurred with the investigation. And after I read it and looked at all the evidence, I concurred with the investigator and disciplined the officer. I don't do that all the time. So sometimes there could be a complaint that doesn't rise to that level. And also sometimes body worn camera will show a whole different story as well. And so I'm not going to spend the city's money on an outside investigator for, for all matters, but on serious ones I do.
Okay.
Mayor, sorry, I'll also add to, I think part of the question was conduct unbecoming. It's usually like rude and discourteous behavior to citizens. That's the concept of conduct unbecoming. That's what that category generally means.
Yeah, and once the annual reports online for, for review, it, it has a little more description on that. So there's more description in the actual annual police report on complaints.
Okay, and there was a, a couple of questions around determining where people are from. Are we able to record additional information somewhere? Or, I mean, it's RIPA's database, right?
Yeah, so we record the RIPA data, anything beyond that. So first of all, so with RIPA, that assembly bill could, could change and they, that could be added in RIPA. RIPA may want to know that, right? So there could be some changes on that on my end for the RIPA data. So we can't just add something to the software to collect the RIPA data on our end. I mean, it's a good question. It's a fair question. But for us to record it, we would work with the consortium, basically all the agencies would probably need to agree to that and add that, that data to the, to the system wide. Because it's, I mean, we're going to have to pay some software company big money to add that.
Right, I spent days looking at the tables and the reports and the whole RIPA report. And some of the numbers just don't make sense
I think
For our city.
I'd like to see it added. I'd like to see added, what time did you figure out the identity of the person? In other words,
That's a good, yeah, yeah.
Did you perceive their gender as you walked up to the door and they rolled down the window? I mean, there's, I think there should be things added as well.
I think for, as I understand it, for 2024, they're already adding new, they're always talking about adding new fields to the RIPA data, database, and they're adding new ones in 2024. I don't recall if location was one of them, but I know they're, they have a handful of fields that they are adding for 2024, so.
Yeah, it seems like in, in the RIPA report, a lot of the focus and a lot of the, the folks that were included in creating the report were from larger, much, much, much larger entities. And so they may or may not have some of the same uniqueness that we have. I mean, when I saw some of the raw numbers, they just didn't make sense to me at all. Because it would mean, you know, certain members of our population, every single person, and then some were stopped. And I just, I, I can't believe that, you know, people are, are doing those, those kinds of, you know, actions that, that they're driving that recklessly or, or, you know, not obeying the laws or, you know, whatever. It just didn't, it, it just didn't make common sense to me. So, so, and we may be unique because of just the, the sheer number of streets that we have that intersect with so many other cities and the fact that we have Sonoma State and, and all of that. So, yeah, some of it was confusing to me. So comments from folks? Did we want to, who wants, Ben, you want to start? Go for it.
Happy to start. First, I just want to say I really appreciate the seriousness with which the department approached this work. And this report is a great first, first year of RIPA data inclusion and, and overall a really informative report. So, and when I looked through the, the RIPA tables earlier this year, nothing stood out to me as, there were lots of areas where I was encouraged by Katati's members. Like I also left LAPD in my table. We look really good. So, but, but even comparing with similar sized cities around the state, I, I feel like in most areas we look good. The, the number that stands out is the one that several people have brought up already, which is the disparity between perceived, officer perceived black was five, five and a half percent of our stops versus our, our population of around 1%. And so my only, I think disappointment in the report is that the reaction to that was purely, here's why we don't want to consider that number seriously and didn't contain any aspect of we're going to double down on our, you know, our implicit bias training, which is mentioned elsewhere in the report, just not in connection with that number. We're going to consider those numbers. I mean, as I look at this table and I see, you know, six and a half percent of our population identifies as multiracial and, and almost no officers identified a person as multiracial and stop. I mean, I have no idea how all those people who identify as multiracial present to an officer making a stop. Maybe some of those were perceived by the officer as black. And, you know, there's all kinds of, like, like the report lays out, there's all kinds of possible, very difficult to interpret things in this table, but I would like to see it prompt some reflection and feed into the department's work to try to be the best department that it can be. And the, the, the report around that table came across purely as, this is why, here's all the reasons why we don't think this data is, is worth considering. So that's my only, only complaint about the report is, it's sort of not incorporating, not saying, there's a bunch of reasons why the, the data is perhaps problematic, but it does point to something that we want to think about. And, and, you know, one of the possible explanations for the data is we're doing something to cause that and we'll, we'll continue to look and try to figure that out. That's all.
You make a good point on that and looking at, in the tables, Ben. One of the largest multiracial combinations in the raw ACS table was the combination of black and white. And so we don't know when someone perceives that, whether they, they are perceiving that they're multiracial or are they just saying that they're black because they have some characteristic that's going to do that? So, yeah, that, that was, and, and that would have, if you look at the raw numbers, that would have doubled the number. Because there were, I think it was 96 in the raw numbers and then there was another 92 in the, that specific combination. So I don't know how we, you know, how we get at that. And I don't know whether RIPA is that strict that, you know, maybe at some point, you know, can you ask? You know, just, just to kind of get a better, you know, kind of equilibrium there to, to
Yeah, I know they're, they're not asking, they're perceiving.
Yeah, so that, that is comparing it to Raleigh, to someone who identifies themselves. You know, I mean, those tables in the census went all the way down to five and six races. You know, so I, I don't know how an officer is going to ever get to that granularity. I, I think that, that becomes a little bit difficult without, you know, because you don't know. You're, you're just perceiving. So that's just, I think, a flaw comparing somebody who self identifies, knowing what they are and somebody perceiving. I think it'll never be perfect. But it can move, you know.
Sorry, just one, just one quick comment, just on the, on the, on the perceived, I think the law requires that we perceive and not ask.
Okay.
I think that's part of the deal. But on Councilmember Ford's earlier comment, I don't think it was, well, I know it wasn't our intent to convey that we're dismissing it. I, and I, and I'm sorry, maybe that's how it came off from the conversation earlier, too. It's not, that's not what we intended. We definitely want to continue to review this and, you know, do every, you know, we're, we're doing quite a bit right now, but it doesn't mean that we can't do more. And we want, you know, we're, the chief and I are both open minded for, you know, if there's things that are there that we can do better, then we're, we're game.
Yeah, and I would reiterate that I'm, I'm curious to see the entire year of 2022, when we were better trained and equipped to, to receive the data, right? Compared to just six months with the learning curve in 2021. So I too want to see the, the data and if there's room for improvement, I'm, I'm all for that. Absolutely.
Sorry, quick follow up and completion. So, yeah, I, I think, I, I certainly have the impression that, that both the city staff as a whole and Chief Parish are very open to trying to, trying to improve in whatever ways data points out that might be needed. And so if the 2022 data shows similar kinds of numbers around disparities, then if we think perhaps causes, say that, that our stops aren't actually residents, then we could probably check that, separate from the RIPA data. Like you could look, like how many of ours, because you do can, you know, get driver's licenses. So I, I'm not sure if you can do that or not, but at least you could explore this notion. What's the percentage of people who identify as black in Sonoma County? Almost all our stops are going to be Sonoma County residents, not all, but most. So I'd like to explore some of these possible explanations. If, if the data looks similar in 2022. And finally, I just want to agree with City Manager Obit that, that cross sort of some, some kind of data on the outcome of the stop correlated with perceived race is more interesting to me than just the straight stops by race. That, so if it turns out that, you know, people of color are searched or cited at much higher rates than white people who are stopped, that's different information that I'd be interested in. And I have seen online one or two departments that are able to publish that information. And so it's available somehow. It's not in the RIPA tables that I could find because they're all just one dimensional tables. So I'd be very interested if that's the kind of data that you can get out of RIPA somehow. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, the answer is that there's a raw data table that has all that unfiltered data. Because the RIPA, but, you know, it needs data dictionaries and you got to like, so it's, it's going to take some, it's going to take some work, but it's doable, obviously.
Somebody must have built the tool to pull that out of those tables.
Yeah, yeah.
To, to see the printout of the, of the data is just, it's unintelligible because they use codes.
Crazy, yeah. I looked at it and went, wow. Yeah, I don't want to see the raw data table.
But, but to answer your question, the RIPA board, when they posted their data on, online, right, they did some pre-filtered runs. It's like you said, one dimensional. The actual data table was complete stop in every data category associated with it, right? So it's, so you can slice and dice it any way you want.
But it's by stop?
Yes.
And you have access to that?
Yeah, but it's, we, we're working that, we sort of in parallel to this whole conversation, we've been trying to work that out.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, I'm just, okay.
But it is.
Glad you do have access.
Yeah, we, we finally figured out how to dump it out of the database, but then it's like, this is not readable, so.
But I just, I'll remind council that for the RIPA data report for 2022 that we're going to see later in the year, right? It's not going to have, whether or not they were from out of the area and when they were stopped, it's not going to be there.
Yeah, this stuff, this stop location does not exist in RIPA data, so.
No, I understand.
But Ben brought up a good point. Can we go into some of our other systems and, and kind of see
Mine more data.
Mine, you know, like by citation, whether people were residents or not residents or whatever other thing tidbits that we can get.
So, yeah, so not to get too wonky on this, but I will for a second. So the RIPA data has like a, it appears that they have like a stop ID or something, some sort of key number that probably could be keyed to the record system that would have driver's license ID number or information, maybe. I, you, you know, I don't know. I, I don't know. But it's, it's, it's a pretty involved kind of database thing that we'd have to figure out.
So just to declare, I wasn't proposing tying the other stop data to the RIPA stop data. I was just proposing of all of our contacts, what percentage are residents and what percentage are not? Nothing to do with the RIPA data.
Yeah, no, I, I understood that.
Just as a, as a point of reference, no different than, than they're using in this report census data, which is different. It's just a, a point of reference.
Yeah, no, I, I understand what is, what you're looking for. So I think this is a consortium topic for me and city manager to bring up. And then maybe other cities were like, yeah, we want to know too. And the more cities that want to know, the, the better because we're all in it together. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So I, I had a few things that I wanted to just praise you for. As I was reading through the whole report, I the commendations, and we already heard a lot of commendations at our last meeting, but there were additional stories in the report. And I was just so impressed with the bravery of our officers to just jump into dangerous situations and really protect people. And I also think it is really, speaks well of our department that, that those are the things we chose to highlight in the report. You know, when the officers are really protecting people and I think that's so, so wonderful to see. I was really pleased with the, the new breakdown of use of force. And we saw some of that at the mid-year report, too, but in, in the report, it was really great to be able to see all the incidents and very encouraging numbers, like as I compared to our numbers to other agencies throughout the state that were able to resolve so many incidents without any use of force was
Yeah.
encouraging.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. For the use of force report, so for 2022, that was all the software that we were able to assist me with that. The year before was kind of a hybrid thing. So, yeah, it was a more, it was a more comprehensive.
Yeah, it really, I felt like it gave me a good picture of what was going on. And I hadn't, because of our limitations of our data previously, we hadn't really been able to get that before. So it was really nice to see. I wanted to commend you for how, just how many different kinds of, types of training officers you're going through. I think that's fantastic. And with regard to the civilian complaint, that you took the initiative to hire the outside investigator, I thought was a great step. I had three things that I wanted to bring up and you already kind of said one of them just now, which is related to the RIPA data and getting so away from the addresses and what city people are in, back to the, the more granular RIPA data that we're looking for. I know that you have a lot of respect in the community and sway with the consortium. So that seems to me like something that a lot of communities might want is to be able to see, you know, what were the results of these stops? And I'm, I'm wondering if you think that's something you could sort of push, push for or advocate for in the consortium? That we might be able to put our heads together and maybe be able to do some of that analysis? Yeah.
So you may or may not know that the city manager is a sitting board member of the consortium and voting member.
All right. Fantastic. With regard to the, the number of, the disparity, disparity of black people being pulled over in our city, I want to concur with the other council members who've spoken that I think our first response needs to be, what can we do about this? And then let's, let's dig into the data more and, and see, see where it goes. But with just the preliminary data, what, what can we do about it? And I tend to agree with you that, that I don't think that most of those excess stops are happening because the officer sees the race of the person. I, I personally think that when somebody is recording data and when they know that their behavior is being recorded, that affects behavior. So I would be surprised once we started doing the RIPA data collection, if, if officers were consciously choosing to pull over people as a result of their race in the numbers that we're seeing here. So what that says to me is that, and I know you're saying that 75% of the time, the officers don't know what the perceived race or, or gender of the person is but until after the stop's been completed. And that makes sense to me. I've gone on a ride along and I couldn't really see the people in the cars when we were pulling them over. He couldn't really see. So what that says to me is there's something systematic about what we're doing. That's not just the personal bias of the officer, all the just the personal bias of the officer. Although maybe that plays a small role in some percentage of the numbers, but there's something systematic that we're doing that's causing people of color to get stopped more often. And I don't know what the cause of that, but I'm is, but I hope that we can approach this with an open mind and with a real sense of curiosity, like let's get to the bottom of it. Let's figure out what it is we're doing that's causing this. And you know, one of the things that I I don't know if this is it, but one line to investigate is that, you know, we saw in the portrait of Sonoma County that being black in Sonoma County is correlated to being in poverty. That people who are black or Hispanic or people of color in general are more likely to have very poor health outcomes in the county and more likely to be living in poverty. So if there's something we're doing that systematically pulling over cars that look kind of beat up, we're going to be picking up more people of color in those in those stops. So I'm wondering if the the stops based on a taillight being out, based on some mechanical issue with the car, I just think that's more likely to get somebody who's economically disadvantaged, who's more likely to be a person of color. So I I think we need to dig into that. I think we need to dig into those pretextual stops and figure out if that is causing this disparity, because that seems to me like one of the chief contenders for what could be causing this inequity. So that was one thought that I had. Another thing is regarding the civilian complaints. I saw and read the description of unfounded as the incident did not happen as described in the complaint. And I I trust the judgment of the people in the department that that that's probably accurate because I have some personal experience with some complaints and no not police complaints, but just I've seen things happen. Try not to get into too much detail. I'm kind of stumbling, but I know that people have complained in Katati about certain things that I know personally didn't happen. So but that said, when the process for dealing with the complaint is the complaint comes in and then the sergeant investigates it and says, no, it didn't happen. It doesn't breed a lot of trust in people who already are distrustful of the police. So I would like to see the process change to provide a little more transparency. Perhaps there could be a person outside of the department, somebody who's like a city employee, but not associated with the police department, who could review the complaints also in conjunction with sergeant, just so that when we come out to the community and say, no, this did not happen, the complaint, the thing the person blamed on us just straight up did not happen. If I'm a community member and I'm seeing that somebody from outside of the police department is looking at that body cam footage and is coming to the same conclusion, like, yeah, it didn't happen. I'm going to be more trustful of that or inclined to trust that outcome. So I think it would strengthen relations with the community if there was a civilian involved in that process somehow. So that's just one idea of how we could accomplish that without. I know we haven't had our discussion about civilian oversight yet or anything like that, but this is something, just just bringing in someone from outside the department on those, I think could help. So those are my comments. Thank you.
So yeah, so mirroring the citizen oversight, I think that would be a place where that could be really helpful. And I'm just sitting here listening to, you know, I am white as well, but essentially a whole lot of white people trying to solve the problem of racism in our town. And I wonder if, for example, this lieutenant vacancy, if there was any way we could get a person of color, you know, hopefully, you know, even better Spanish speaking person of color in the leadership could be really helpful. You know, I mean, we have some on on the board now, which is fantastic, but in the leadership of the police department. And I know it's incredibly hard to get anybody and being specific probably makes it even harder, but I feel like I feel like that would go a long way, like it would be an action that we could take to show our not just to demonstrate how serious we are, but to include a person of color in the solution rather than us trying to figure it out for them on their behalf. Let's include them directly if possible.
Yes. So I concur with my colleagues on the council about that. In addition to what Councilwoman River said is also bilingual pay for staff that are bilingual. And I also appreciate this information. I realize it's only six months of data. I look forward to continuing to review the Rippa. And and just continue to see it so that some of the numbers that stood out, like, you know, stops compared to other cities. The rate of Rippa stops by race ethnicity, you know, one of the things I noticed, and I want to continue seeing the more like a year's a year's worth is that the the numbers for black and Hispanic Latino were high. And I looked at Rotted Parks, which I think that they have maybe higher Latino, higher black populations in their community. But yet it looked like even ours were a little higher in in comparison to theirs. So I'd be interested in kind of continuing to look at those numbers and seeing how that affects our community. And it's true that location, you know, matters. And if there's a way of getting that information, as my colleague said too, because it could be as a result of a road highway or 116 or 101, you know, but without knowing that, all we have is the data. So we're going on on our expression and our information just based on what we have right now. So I look forward to more data, but I thank you very much for bringing this report to us and all the information is very valuable. Thank you.
Yes, chief, I appreciate the report and the details. I too was frustrated with the, I like the way Ben put it, the one dimensional tables. What was most frustrating to me to go through this report? And a lot of the recommendations and observations that were made were made on multi dimensional tables that we don't have access to. And that was really frustrating for me. So at some point, I really would like us to be able to, for our own area, understand those cross dimensional tables to to be able to highlight and understand if and where there are any issues so that we can come up with solutions that fit what our specific problems are. Because we may have completely different problems than a lot of the the data that got rolled up all the way to the state level. You know, certainly we are different than a Los Angeles and an Oakland. But we may have some of the same issues. We ours may be completely different for all we know. The other thing, you know, it was brought up about the the fix it ticket things, you know, I would some areas do things like a fix it fund, if you will. And you know, maybe that that's something that we should consider to help folks that, you know, because of trying to provide food or housing for their for their families, that they they don't have the capability to fix some of those minor things. So, you know, I would be you know, supportive of us looking into doing, you know, something like, something like that to be able to to help with broken taillights or, you know, headlights that are out or, you know, things like that. I I don't know what to do. I don't, I couldn't come up with a really good solution because it gets really expensive on the ones with expired licenses. Because that that has a ripple effect. Because usually when you have expired tags, it also means that you don't have insurance. And, you know, there is a, you know, kind of community effect to that. If if people are driving around with unlicensed vehicles and no insurance. I was hit once by an uninsured motorist and had to basically fight with the insurance company to get my car fixed. So there, there is an impact. I don't have a good solution for that. But I did notice in some of the recommendations, there are things like capturing that information and sending a ticket. And that could sometimes avoid that whole pretext of looking for other things that we send, we mail a ticket rather than than stopping and have that that interaction. Just that's another thought that was in there that sounded like a good suggestion to keep those interactions down. So with that, great job. And I look forward to seeing raw data for us and our a whole year's report to see if that that kind of changes any anything.
Yeah, well, thank you, council and mayor. So mayor, that's that's an interesting idea or concept, a like fix it fund. I should talk to some other chiefs about that. I like that idea. It's different. And Katati is different. So I'll look into that. And then the cars with expired registration, you're right, sometimes it's insurance. A lot of times it's a smog, your car issue. A lot of times it's that. Which could kind of weigh its way into the fix it.
Well, yeah, I mean, if
It's a good idea.
That's what's keeping it. If that's all that's keeping it, they could, they can pay their insurance and they and can pay their registration, but that cost, you know, because it's about $100, you know, maybe we do some kind of grant, you know, for for some of those. I mean, I'm open to looking at options for some of that stuff in the big scheme of things. Okay, so are we ready to move on with this? Mr. Barker, did you have something to say?
No, I guess I'm ready to move on.
Okay, all righty then. Then we will move on to the council workshop on potential reach codes related to all electric buildings and all and electric vehicle charging. And who is ah? Maybe Autumn's in, I know. Autumn, how come you're in both places? How come you're on Zoom and here? You're in two places at once. Oh, the shell of you. Okay. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Harvey and members of the council. Let me find my little remote here. Okay. Sorry, I'm still trying to learn how to work my, where do I point it? Okay, all right, sorry. So the goal, we have several goals for tonight's workshop. The first is we'd like to clarify the provisions of the 2022 building code. And if you if you'll recall, the the council adopted the California Building Code to become Katati's building code last fall, took effect January 1st of this year. There were some questions at the time regarding some of the provisions of the code. So we're we're back to clarify some of those specifically relating to building electrification, solar photovoltaics and electric vehicle charging. We would also like to begin the discussion about reach codes and I'll go into what exactly a reach code is in a little more detail in just a moment, but look at some options for reach codes that might work for Katati and look at some other examples from other jurisdictions. And then finally, we're hoping, we're hoping you'll provide direction to the staff so that we can prepare a reach code amendment to our building code if the council so desires. Okay, I see my problem was hitting the back button. Okay. Before I go any further, I want to acknowledge that in preparing this staff report and looking at reach code options, we had a tremendous amount of support from the Reach Codes Program, which is a sub program of the California Energy Codes and Standards Program. And we have two, hopefully they're still here. We have two representatives of that program who are joining us via Zoom tonight. They are experts in in the reach code world and experts in the building code. And we have Misty Bruceary and Neil Disno who are joining us here tonight, and they are going to be available to answer questions after my presentation that you might have, because I'm sure that a lot of this is is kind of beyond my scope of understanding. The the Reach Code Program basically works with local jurisdictions to develop reach codes and they're funded by PG&E and the Southern California Energy Providers. And they are specifically here to help us figure out what we're doing. We are very grateful to them for their assistance. It worked really well the last time I was in this room. Okay, next slide, please, Kevin. All right, so the topic of reach codes is a pretty large and complex topic, as you probably gauge by the size of the staff report. And you know, there's a lot more detail in the staff report and there's a lot more to know out there in the world. We're, I'm just going to be hitting the highlights in my staff report. So some background. The California Building Code is updated every three years and we are currently currently working with the 22 code. It's in effect to 23 through 25. The code is, it contains mandatory measures as well as voluntary measures that kind of go above and beyond. And we call those tiers one and tier two. Those are voluntary measures that jurisdictions jurisdictions can adopt. And the local jurisdictions jurisdictions adopt the building code following the state's adoption of the building code. A reach code specifically refers to local measures that have been adopted that go above and beyond what the state requires on the mandatory level. So tiers one and tiers two are also considered to be reach codes. And Katati actually adopted the tier one code measures that relate to EV charging. So we actually have a reach code already here in Katati, and we're actually the only jurisdiction in Sonoma County that has done that thus far related to EV charging. Some jurisdictions also adopt custom reach codes, and those are tailored more to the specific needs of their community and their specific conditions. And reach codes are really popular right now for reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and addressing climate goals. We looked at two primary types of reach codes. One is the all electric or building electrification. It's also referred to as a natural gas ban. So it essentially is a requirement that that buildings put in only electric infrastructure, no gas. There are 65 jurisdictions in the state that have adopted those types of codes. As far as electric vehicle charging, there are 44 jurisdictions that have adopted those types of codes thus far in California. Okay, next slide. So the world of reach codes was thrown into a tizzy last week, which is sort of good timing for us because we haven't gone full blown into ordinance mode. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals released a ruling against the city of Berkeley, essentially. The case was California Restaurant Association versus City of Berkeley. And the the court found that Berkeley's all electric reach code was preempted, is preempted by a federal law that relates to appliances, which dates back to 1975. So the legal review of the implement implications, I'm not as tired as you guys are, and yet look at me. So the the implications of this are still being assessed and we're waiting to find out what happens. This may not actually affect reach codes that relate to building code updates. Berkeley's reach code, we actually lived in another part of its code, not the building code. Also, we think that EV charging reach codes should be okay. But what we'd like to do is get your direction, your feedback, go back and wait to see how the legal fallout occurs and then move forward accordingly with what we can. Okay, next slide. So back to our first goal here, we're going to look at what the building code requires at this time, starting with building electrification. So these are mandatory measures that Katati has adopted from the code. They all apply to residential. So one requirement is related to electric heat pump space heating. So that's required in all new residential buildings. It is possible to avoid that requirement with other measures to create an offset, but the basic requirement is for all new residential buildings to have the heat pump space heating. Hot water heating by space, by heat pumps is also required in new single family. Gas water heater heating can occur in multifamily, but there are some caveats related to installing solar thermal in addition to allowing gas water heating. Newly constructed residential buildings do need to be 100% electric ready is the term, which means that all new residential buildings require electric infrastructure so that they can support electric appliances in the future. The electric appliances are not required at the time of construction. But and gas is still allowed, gas appliances are allowed, but the infrastructure is therefore transitioned in the future should the But and gas is still allowed, gas appliances are allowed, but the infrastructure is therefore transitioned in the future should the occupant wish that. Next slide. The building code also has some requirements related to solar photovoltaics or PBs. And again, these are from the mandatory set of requirements. Essentially, all newly constructed residential of up to three stories needs to have a PV system installed, and that really is going to vary based on what are the conditioned areas of the home, what's the square footage there, and what are the number of units? So it's sort of a formulaic system. All all newly constructed multifamily and some commercial that are multifamily over four stories also requires a solar PV system and battery storage as well. Okay, next slide. So when we took a look at what the code requirements were for for EVs, we learned that even the experts finds the current code requirements and terminology confusing. So we're going to start with a glossary before we get into what the what the code actually says. So just looking at the first two items here, we have, you have receptacles and you have chargers, also known as EVSE, EV supply equipment. So a receptacle is essentially an outlet. It is where you can plug your portable charger in, or at some point, a permanent charger could be installed there. Then there's chargers themselves, or this EVSE. So there's a difference between having a receptacle where you can plug in and actually having the charger, which is a permanently installed charging device. Okay, so obviously chargers are kind of the, you know, the next level up. We also have different levels of charging power and speed. So we have level one and we have level two. So level one is, you know, the the lowest level of charging, it's what you get when you plug into your household outlet. Level two has a range mid to higher level charging faster. And the the building code and the reach codes primarily deal in levels one and levels two, although there is actually even kind of a level three out there. Okay, next slide. So moving on with our glossary. So in terms of what the requirements are, we see requirements based on number of parking spaces that are served. So a parking space can be level two EV capable, which means that sometime in the future, there could be a car charge there, but currently you don't have anything to plug into, and there's no, there's no equipment there, but the power is going to that location. So it's really about the future. So that's what the capable is about. Ready is just that, it's it's ready. So you can have an EV, level one EV ready receptacle where you can plug in, you can have a lower power level two receptacle, you can have a level two EV ready receptacle. And again, that's kind of going up in level, you know, amount of power and speed of charge. And then finally, you can have an actual charger. And those come in either level two or the DC fast charger, which is the super fast charge, which I think is sort of the level three. And that's a picture of our Tesla Cruiser over there. So that's, yeah. Throw that in a little local color. Okay, next slide, please. So what is in the code, having gone through that glossary? So what is in the code currently? And again, this is tier one. So this is our own reach code that we adopted voluntarily, is that one space for every, in every new single-family or duplex home needs to be level two EV ready. So needs to have a receptacle. For multifamily and hotel, 35% of the spaces need to be EV ready at the lower power of level two. So they'll have receptacles as well. If the multifamily or hotel has 20 units or more, there's an additional requirement for actual chargers. So that's the level 10% level two EVSE. In the case of existing multifamily developments, when there is a minimum of 10% change to the parking spaces, that will also trigger installation of EV equipment, require EV capable spaces, so electric to to additional spaces in the parking area for EV charging. There are also requirements for non-residential in new construction, and those are essentially a 20% at level two capable. And that's a minimum of two spaces in any given project, and 10% of chargers, 10% of spaces with chargers. Next slide. And just to make things a little bit more complicated with the EVs. So the the California Building Standards Commission will typically adopt what's known as an intervening cycle update or a mid-cycle update, where they make some adjustments to the building code midway through the three years. Usually, it's cleanup, and it encompasses different parts of the code. In this particular case, in this cycle, they are really looking at EVs and making some substantial changes that really are going to impact multifamily and hotels and motels for the most part. And I know this table's kind of hard to see on the screen. And this change would go into effect July 1st of next year. But essentially, you can see, you know, the top is what the codes currently say. There's mandatory and the tier one and tier two, so Katari's there in tier one. And about 35% of spaces being covered with some sort of EV charging access, 45% for your bigger projects. The intervening cycle is essentially collapsing the large and the small category. So it's saying, no matter what size the project is, all the requirements are the same, and the requirements are increased. So it's going up to a total of 55% of spaces having some level of EV charging access for the man, just the baseline mandatory requirements, and then 10% each higher for tier one and tier two, which are the voluntary measures that a jurisdiction can adopt. Next slide. So that was a really fast review of what the code requires or will require as of July 1st. So now I'd like to take a look at reach codes and look at some examples. With the the all-electric reach codes, we have some good examples locally. So we're going to look at a few of those. And there are 65 jurisdictions, again statewide, that have adopted all-electric reach codes. So this is just looking at, you know, just our nearest neighbors. As far as, so two, so two jurisdictions locally have adopted reach codes, all-electric reach codes that just address residential and new construction. The County of Sonoma's reach code addresses just single-family homes, and they do have some exceptions for cooking appliances as well as generators. The City of Santa Rosa's reach code goes a little bit further and applies to duplexes and low-rise multifamily up to to three stories. And Santa Rosa has the distinction of being, they were an early adopter in all-electric reach codes. They have the distinction of being the only jurisdiction in Sonoma County so far that has been sued over their reach code and prevailed legally. So and that may be because they weren't an early adopter, so the time has passed. But they do have that distinction of having a, what's recognized as a strong reach code from the legal perspective. Next slide. I think it's some more examples. Three of our neighbors have adopted all-electric codes that, actually, there's more, there's a few jurisdictions or cities in Marin County, but what we're, we looked at specifically in the staff report is these three. Their reach codes for all-electric apply to residential and non-residential as well as significant alterations and additions to existing buildings, and that includes Healdsburg, Petaluma, and Marin County. Healdsburg does have an exception in its residential requirements for cooking appliances and certain fireplaces. So Petaluma and Marin County do not have those exceptions, so they said no to cooking appliances as well for gas. What these local codes tend to have in common is that they apply the all-electric, not just to the buildings, but to the entire property. So that means no gas plumbing anywhere on the property, say to swimming pools, hot tubs for water heating, gas appliances, other types of gas, recreational appliances that might be outside. They also apply to detached accessory dwelling units or ADUs. And they do provide exceptions for non-residential, certain types of non-residential, including restaurants and commercial food-related businesses, certain types of industrial and manufacturing uses that rely on gas, essential services, emergency power backups, generators, and other cases where the all-electric can be considered infeasible, and that's the, would be the call of the the building official. In almost all those cases, when there are exceptions allowed, they do require that those exceptions be electric-ready when they are constructed. Next slide. So looking at examples for EV charging reach codes. Here, we've gone a little broader with our examples and looked at more of an aggregate, an aggregation of the statewide reach codes or across the state, partly because the reach codes that, because Sonoma County does not have other reach codes for EV charging besides Katari's. And it's just interesting to look and see what the differences are in certain parts of the Bay Area where there's a lot of EV char, EV vehicular ownership. So we, so 44 of the jurisdictions in the state have adopted these EV charging reach codes, and most of them have a single-family requirement. But for half of those, it's it's the same as Katari's. It's the tier one standards of one space being level two EV ready. More than half of them have not only adopted that once the first space requirement, but are also applying a requirement to the second space in a single-family situation, and that that be either level one capable or level one ready typically. Next slide. So of those, of the 44 jurisdictions with EV charging reach codes, 42 of them have additional requirements relating to multifamily. And these are mostly custom reach codes, so not tier one or tier two, but kind of their own blend based on that community's specific needs. And more than half of them mandate that 100% of spaces in multifamily have some level of EV charging access, be that a capable space, an EV ready space, or actual chargers installed. Smaller number require that just 50% of the spaces be have EV access. And just to review that what the tier one multifamily requirement is currently is that 35% of spaces have level two receptacles, or you go up to 45% of spaces and add some chargers if you have a larger project. So you can see that with these, these reach codes, you know, the the requirements can be quite a bit more. Next slide. Some of the reach codes also address non-residential buildings. And again, these are mostly custom reach codes, and they require some combination, again, of EV capable, ready, or charging. And I know the table's a little bit hard to read, but you can see, just for example, there that, for instance, the first line, hotels and motels, 32 of the jurisdictions in the count, in the state have some percentage of required spaces more than what the code requires. So, you know, 11 jurisdictions require that that up to 50% of the spaces have some amount of EV charging access, 19 jurisdictions require somewhere between 50, but not up to 100 spaces, and only two require one space per unit essentially, or 100% of spaces. So they're kind of all over the place. In general, there's, there are more requirements related to office and other types of non-residential than there are to hotels and motels. Next slide. So moving on to what we can do in in Katari. So we've looked at what, you know, what the code requires and what's happening in other places. If Katari is interested in adopting a reach code, this is our process here. We're having this workshop tonight. The council may provide direction to staff on what they would like to see in a reach code. We'll take that, we'll let the legal dust settle for a little bit until we understand what we can actually do. And then get to the point of actually preparing the the ordinance. And we will bring that back to the council. So this is the typical ordinance process where we have first and second readings, public hearings. And if the the ordinance is adopted, then it's 30 days to go into effect. We do need to file our reach code. Should we adopt one with the California Building Standards Commission? It's just a filing, it's not an actual approval. So all the approval happens at the local level. Should we find that as we go into implementation, should we get to that point, we find that we had, we're learning some lessons and want to adjust a little bit? We would have the opportunity to make some amendments to our reach code potentially with this intervening cycle update, which we would need to adopt anyway to take effect July 1st of next year. And then again, with the triennial update, when the new, full new building code comes out, which would take effect the beginning of 2026. Following that, a reach code to the building code needs to be adopted, re-adopted every three years, along with the brand-new building code from the state, and that would be the opportunity to make adjustments to the reach code as the council sees fit. Next slide. So looking at our options, and these, these options that we've laid out here do reflect the staff's recommendations at this point, based on our understanding of what's available to us and what makes sense for Katari. We, we would recommend that, that an all-electric reach code be adopted and that it apply to all newly constructed buildings, and that would be residential and non-residential. And that would include detached ADUs. We would also recommend that the reach code, the all-electric reach code be extended to substantial additions and remodels, and and that would be both residential and non-residential. And the, we would set thresholds, we want to set thresholds so that we're not penalizing the very smallest projects. And so for a substantial remodel, that would be a 50% alteration or of 50% of the existing floor area, but only with a, with a project, an existing building that's 1,200 square feet or larger. And in that case, we could require that the remodeled area be made all-electric, or we could just require that it be made electric-ready. In the case of an addition, we would set a trigger of 600, minimum size, 600 square feet being added, and it would be, that would be the minimum amount, that it would be 50% of the existing floor area being added to the project. And that the added area would be made all-electric, so there would be no extension of gas lines to the area that's being added. Next slide. We would also recommend that the all-electric be applied to the entire property rather than just the buildings. And sort of by corollary, that would also entail prohibiting the extension of gas plumbing on a property to a new structure where the existing structure might already have gas. We would call it a mixed-fuel building, where there's already electric and gas. Somebody's building something new, a new workshop, a detached ADU, that they would not be allowed to extend the gas plumbing to that structure. It would be all-electric. We would also recommend including propane with the natural gas prohibition, so that plumbed propane would also not be available. But that would not preclude portable propane devices, like the heaters, the little tanks. We would also suggest including a number of exceptions to the all-electric requirements, but that require that accepted buildings be made electric-ready. And on the next slide, we'll talk about what those exceptions might be. Next slide, please. So potential exceptions to include with an all-electric requirement for residential buildings, we would probably want to accept attached ADUs where there is already gas lines to the property. It's a mixed-fuel residence, they're adding on to an existing residence. Probably would want to allow them the the opportunity to extend gas into that that portion of the building. Or perhaps it's converting a garage or something like that. We would allow exceptions on a case-by-case basis in cases of infeasibility, again, determined by the building official. And perhaps we would also require that the accepted buildings be made electric-ready, even if they're not going all-electric. In terms of non-residential buildings, very similar, the exceptions could be made all electric-ready. But the exceptions could include restaurants, any commercial cooking or food preparation-related businesses, still be able to use gas or have gas installed, certain industrial and manufacturing processes where gas is required, essential facilities such as public safety and medical buildings. And then any kind of emergency or backup generators could still receive a gas supply. And then additional And then additional exceptions based on infeasibility at the building officials discretion. Next slide. Moving on to EV charging. Our recommendation at this point, just knowing that this intervening code update or intervening cycle update is coming. Along from the Building Standards Commission, our recommendation would be to maintain our tier one. Requirements for single-family and duplex homes. But to adopt the intervening cycle code update in advance. So that would go into effect July 1st if we don't do anything anyway, but we could, we can adopt it in advance. And that would be at the mandatory level. So we'd take, we would essentially would take effect in 2023. If we can bring the reach code to you that soon. And that mandatory level would require a 55% that spaces in multifamily and hotel spaces have access to EV charging. Twenty twenty-four. Yeah. So the, yes, the intervening code cycle update must be adopted by July 1st of 2024. Well, we're suggesting that we could adopt it in advance and just be, be, be right on it. And again, we could consider additional EV charging measures in the next building code cycle update. If we feel that this is not necessarily, once we get started with it, if it's not necessarily what we wanted to do, if we want to do more. Next slide. At this time, we're, we are not recommending a reach code that relates to solar PVs for Katati. And the reason for that is that under the current code, most building occupancy types do have a requirement for some amount of PVs. And the, the 2022 building code extended the PV and battery storage requirements to multifamily, to high-rise multifamily and non-residential. Which is a new requirement and developers are still learning how to work with that, how to implement that. Given roof space limitations and the challenges of having multiple electric accounts on multi-tenant properties. And so it may, at this point, it, there are still a number of issues to be worked out on that front. And if we talk about expanding the requirements in single-family. The yield is actually very, pretty minimal as far as emissions reductions. So at this point, we're, we're, we're suggesting we just go with what the code is currently requiring for PVs and we could revisit it in the future. If we wish. Hey, I think that might be it. Okay. So our, our recommendation to you is that you conduct a workshop and provide direction to staff on potential all-electric. And electric vehicle charging reach code amendments to the city's building code. So. I am available to answer questions. We also have, if there's, hopefully they're still there, our, our folks from the local reach codes. Program is Bruce Ari and Mr. De Snow to answer your questions.
Thank you. Sylvia?
Sure. Yeah, I just have a question on potential exceptions in all electric code. There are some exceptions that are on a case-by-case basis per building officials, and we're not sure what those are yet. But would those be amended in future reach codes to include if there was a pattern of similar exceptions that happen?
Yes, we could absolutely do that. If we, yeah, we would definitely be each cycle, we would be working on lessons learned. And making adjustments if necessary, you know, if the council sees that that's a good idea.
Have there been prior modifications or amendments from prior exceptions that we made?
I bet I can say.
Yeah, I would say not to reach specific in Katati. There are some cities who have, you know, specific industries where there may be a. Perceived or a documented need for natural gas fuel as a source to support a certain business type. And in that case, those communities have made those exceptions. And then the other is the cooking facilities, Healdsburg specifically called out cooking facilities for all uses. Our research, we identified some reach coded exceptions. Are intended for like culturally specific cooking facilities, a tandoori oven is one example, like you have to have a flame in a tandoori oven. So electric version, that just doesn't work. And so those types of exceptions are identified in certain reach codes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Couple of questions. Can you explain why you're, why you think ADUs added to existing mixed fuel residences shouldn't be subject to the substantial addition? Requirement.
Um, one, well, one would be that. We're also recommending that the, the trigger for an existing building addition be 600 square feet. And some ADUs are, you know, they're, they're smaller than that. And so it's partly the size. The other, the other reason is that. What, what we have learned is that. Well, one of the driving factors is often cost effectiveness and looking at gas versus electric. And the cost savings to be, to be recouped through going all-electric are really in never running the gas line in the first place. And so when we have an existing mixed fuel building, the savings of going all-electric. Within the footprint of an existing building or adding on to an existing building, the cost savings is not there. As much as it would be in a larger project or in a new construction project. So we don't want to undo lead burden.
Yeah.
Property owners.
I mean, I understand that, but that whole argument applies to the entire substantial remodel or substantial addition conditions. That would argue, we just shouldn't have those requirements. So another possible argument I just thought of is that we're, we want to promote ADUs because we need the housing and we don't. Necessarily need to promote people making their 2,500 square foot houses, 3,500 square foot. So I could see maybe a justification as leaving ADUs out of the substantial addition requirement. For that purpose, because we, we need to produce more ADUs. So anyway, that was one question. Can, do you have any examples of, of case-by-case extenuating circumstance or infeasibility kind of things in mind? And just, that just sounds so at the discretion of whoever happens to be in the position at the time.
Right. I would actually like to see if Misty and Neil. Our local energy codes program folks might have some examples to share with us.
Good evening, council members. Thank you. My name's Misty Bruce Ari. Just to address that question, we do know of a few local examples, very specific, unique examples. Oftentimes, we've run into areas, projects that. May not have room. For the transformer, they may need a new transformer, there may not be room for it or for the equipment. We've also seen, as Noah mentioned, many. Industries that require a flame. And so in those cases, the, the exception is often limited to that industrial process itself. So the building can still be electrified, but the industrial process is limited. Hospitals in some cases have had exceptions as well. And. Restaurants that need a flame are, are the, the largest exception that we have, that we've seen across the board is the commercial cooking.
Okay, thanks. And, and we're proposing to include commercial cooking despite already, it's not discretionary, it's just exempted, right? In, in the staff proposal.
Right. Yeah. And, and I should note too, that what we presented here tonight is just the, the broad overview, the details of the ordinance. We would, you know, we would be looking to tighten up, you know, some of those areas where it might, we might need some more definition.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. So I presume that Calgary does not have a tier one and tier two building electrification reach code that we can just. I like model ordinances. No, we have to make it up.
No, that's, that's my understanding is that, would you say that's, that's correct, Misty and Neil?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
And. As far as the proposal of adopting the intervening cycle code update early. So it will be finalized a year ahead? Like we can be sure that's ready to go a year early?
Apparently, yes. It's, it's a lengthy process and my understanding is that the, the Building Standards Commission is working through the final version of those requirements at this time. And yeah, they do, they do finalize that in advance, well, in advance of the adoption.
Okay, thanks. That's not my question.
Thank you. Two questions. One, can, I noticed that in some of the jurisdictions around it, by the way, thank you for providing all the copious examples. That was really helpful to read through. In some of the jurisdictions, they used a different definition for a substantial remodel that had to do with the exterior walls and the removal of the interior. Can you just describe a little bit about why you chose to recommend the floor area on that?
So in my experience, I'll just say I, I've seen multiple jurisdictions use the wall. Trigger. And then I've seen multiple unique building practices and styles trying to maintain those walls. And it's from my standpoint, it just, I mean, frankly, it gets ridiculous with what some people will try to do to not have to comply. And so rather than try to have those arguments, we just went with a substantial remodel. But rather than using the building code definition, which is a dollar-based definition, which again, gets to a subjective argument potentially. We just went with the square footage and the idea was, you know, someone who has a very modest house, 900 square feet, wants to do maybe a bedroom addition. You know, they've worked hard and saved their money and they want to have an en suite, you know, new. Master bed, bedroom and bathroom, 500 square feet. Maybe shouldn't be penalized if they have a modest home and they're just proposing a modest addition. Same thing with the, the need for maybe a new bedroom or an ADU to accommodate a family member. Don't penalize them by adding significant costs, making them kind of repower their entire heating. System, allow them to utilize what they have to serve that additional small square footage. However, if you're choosing to go above 50% of your building or 600 square feet, from the staff perspective, that's a fairly. Accommodating amount of living space that can be added without forcing you to upgrade your heating system. But if you choose to do so, then you are going to have to electrify from the current proposal.
Great, thank you. My second question was just about the ADUs or other substantial additions. If. So new, would the new addition be, would it be allowed to be served by like a gas-powered central heat? That's in the existing building?
That's the idea is the existing central heat could be used to serve the addition up to 50% of the existing floor area or. 600 square feet.
So if it was over 600 square feet. My question has to do with like not adding new gas lines, but just vents for the central heating.
Yeah. So but what we're saying is if it's over 600 square feet, then you need to provide a separate fully electric heating. Method for that additional square footage or repower the whole house and add ducts.
Okay, thank you.
I, I keep thinking about the residential backup generators, which they can't be electric because they're meant to back up electricity, right? Has that been a consideration and would that be an exception or how would that work?
So that's a good question. And under the way it's currently proposed. You could not, if you didn't have a gas line at your home now, you could not run a new gas line to power a backup generator. If you had one and were only proposing to add a backup generator, that would be allowed under the current system. And from staff perspective, they're, they're not going to use additional greenhouse gas, creating fuel that often because they're emergency. Nature. So if the idea is to reduce emissions, just the presence of a generator to be used when the electricity goes out isn't going to be a significant contributor.
Okay, so. So for example, if you wanted to, I'm just thinking like, like that, you know, the med pods, right? Like the ADUs meant for our older, you know, family members or whatever, who may have medical concerns that you want to make sure you have a generator. The backup generators, you know, cannot be electric. So if you were building that and if, I mean. I don't know, say a thousand square feet. For your mother-in-law or whoever, you would not be able to run a gas line if there wasn't one already.
Under what's currently proposed in the ordinance, that's correct. You would be required to have a portable generator to power that.
Gas generator.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's multiple fuel types for portable generators, but yeah, that would be a, a different option.
Right.
Or the council could provide direction to staff that we should make that as an exception.
Okay, or it could be a case-by-case. Could that be an exception that the. City that, you know, you would decide on, or would that have to go through?
Staff would appreciate direction from the council if they choose to have that exception.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
To follow on to that, I know that the portable generators that use gas. They're not as simple to. Invoke as an all-house or all ADU generator that just recognizes that the power is off and, and clicks on. So following Kay's example of an elderly person living in there. They may not be capable of going and filling it up with gasoline and doing what needs to happen to turn it on. And flipping whatever switches then that need to have happened to make that work or plugging in what needs, you know. It, it gets a lot more complicated in her example for, for an older person to be able to do that.
Absolutely. I would just say, you know, if it's a new construction, it's going to be required to have some amount of solar. Provided with the new construction and the technology with solar is changing so quickly. They would likely be able to power, charge up a portable battery or a full-size battery. So just, there are a lot of options to the gas-powered backup generator that's permanently mounted. But the council could provide the direction.
Yeah. But if you do the solar with the battery backup, doesn't that typically add another? I don't know, $5,000 to $10,000 to your project?
Battery. In my, in my experience, a battery is about $10,000, absolutely. But I will also say, you know, most of the vehicles, the electric vehicles that are coming out in 2024 are bidirectional. So that vehicle can function as a battery. There's also new technology where your solar panels, without even having any battery generation, can. Disconnect from the grid themselves and provide power during the day without even any battery backup at all. And that's currently available technology. So I'm just. These are just all things for the council to consider as they provide, but as they provide their thoughts and direction. But the simplest way to address this, to ensure that there is a gas-powered generator available is to make that exception.
I, are you done? Okay, I just wanted to, so I have a couple of questions. So you mentioned that. There's a possibility of some legal fallout and, you know, you're kind of waiting on that. Do we have any sense of, are we talking? Months, years, decades? What are we talking about as far as waiting?
Well, you have, what you have right now is a Ninth Circuit panel decision. Okay. And what the court said was that Berkeley's ordinance was preempted. By a federal law that actually is designed to govern appliances. But, but you know, the court's interpretation is not unreasonable. It's possible Berkeley is going to. Appeal it to the, what's called en banc as the entire Ninth Circuit. Set of judges to reconsider it. And then i- if that fails, they could also appeal it to the US Supreme Court. That decision is likely to impact all, if it, if it stands in its current form, is going to impact almost all. Electrification ordinances, including anything you enact. We will be evaluating whether there are any other options for you to enact an all-electric, an electrification ordinance in light of that decision. While we await further developments in the current case. Yeah, there may be other alternative methods of, of, you know, accomplishing your policy goals beyond what other agencies have proposed. There is an exception under the federal law for building codes. It's actually fairly strict. There's a seven factors you got to meet. There has been some, been some discussion suggesting that, that maybe, maybe you could meet all those. I'm not certain about that. We're going to be evaluating all those things. I think. I think your next step, the first item on the list was legal analysis. I don't think we're going to be waiting for the legal cloud to, to go away. What we're going to do is research it further and determine what, what, what policy options are available to you right now. That makes sense?
Okay, my second question is, when you say electric ready, this can get confusing. So does electric ready mean a plug in the wall? Or does electric ready mean the panel it has the capability? So did the wiring have to go through the walls? Because that can cost wise make a big difference. You know, having enough amps in your panel is one thing. Having wiring put in the house, you don't want to wait to do that even on a remodel. You want to get that that wiring in there because you don't want to be tearing up walls after the fact. So what does electric ready mean? Which one of those?
Yeah, we wanted to turn to our experts here and see if they have any comments on that. And actually, while we're at it, I realized we might, you might have had some comments too on the generator question as well. So if, you know, you want to address that a little, you know, once we get through this question, if you have any comments on the generator question, that would be appreciated too.
All right, Neil De Snow with Misty Bruceary and Associates. The electric readiness typically would involve a set of conductors, that is wires that would go to an outlet or a box that's behind the range or near the water heater or wherever the appliance is. If it wasn't wires, it could be a conduit, just an empty conduit where you could pull wires through it later, but you wouldn't have to open any walls. So the idea is to have everything in place. It's very simple to do.
Thank you. That that makes some sense to me. And then on your slide, you said that you want to prohibit all propane. Is that really the intention? Because I didn't see that in any of the, in the stuff here. What it said in the all electric reach code was to define all electric as no fuel gas to preclude plumbing propane.
Yeah, so a number of jurisdictions have defined the gas as any fuel gas and that includes propane as well as natural gas. And that is, and when we're talking about an all electric reach code, that refers to plumbed. So that would be if somebody's got their propane, great big propane tank on their property and that is plumbed into their house. It does not relate to portable propane devices.
But are you saying that anybody, the way I read what you had on the slide was all propane is prohibited? Does that mean existing houses that have propane, propane is now prohibitive and you have to take it out now?
No, and none of this would be retroactive.
Well, the way the slide was worded, I just wanted to be sure because it doesn't say that. It's not worded that way in on the packet page 112. So I just, the slide said something a little bit different.
Yeah, nothing, nothing is proposed. It would be, would be retroactive and would apply to something that's already in place.
And my last question kind of piggybacks on Ben's question. I was a little taken back on there when it said allow exceptions on a case by case basis. Will we have any kind of sort of review to make sure that we're, we're being consistent? In that, you know, be like, okay, well Laura comes in and she, you know, says blah, 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 and she gets an exception. And Ben comes in and the situation seems the same, but they tell Ben, are we going to have any kind of consistency check?
Yeah, but yeah, absolutely. I mean, the, so at the staff level, the, the building inspector, building official and the community development director would be reviewing, you know, any exceptions. I assume we would have some kind of a process where, you know, there would be documentation required. We would develop whatever that process is and whatever documentation would be required to really demonstrate that it is truly infeasible. And basically that the the project is not going to go forward or there's some sort of material harm potentially to the property owner, the developer, if they go forward that, you know, the project just doesn't work. But yeah, there would be, we would absolutely require consistency. And, you know, as had been mentioned too, you know, if we find that there are a number of these exceptions that come up, then we would want to look at some codifying those, those exceptions so that as much as possible, we can tighten up the process in the future.
That makes sense. It's just the way it was worded in there. It sounded like, well, you just go and see your buddy, the building official. Fix your act.
That was Councilmember Lina's idea.
Okay, those are all my questions. Any other questions? Yes, Laura.
Oh, I, yeah, I wanted to see if, if Ms. Bruceary or Mr. De Snow had any comments about the, the generator question and gas generators and how other communities have dealt with that or?
I don't have any additional comments, except to say that many communities have allowed them in rural areas. And that seems to be the, the biggest exception where there are generators allowed. I think there's a lot of folks looking at battery storage as well. There's funding from the, gosh, IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act will help with purchasing storage tremendously. And in some cases, for some income qualified people, almost pay for the whole thing. And so there may be some assistance there to help get that back up.
I had one question for, for our guests on Zoom as well, which is just, do you have a crystal ball or any ideas or thoughts about the lawsuit that was that we received news about?
I wish we did. Unfortunately, we don't. There are a lot of nuances and there's a lot of folks reviewing it right now. And, and we are just waiting for the legal review. Neither of us are attorneys. Crystal ball would be great.
Crystal balls are broken. Hey, any other questions? Okay, all right. All right, then I will open this workshop up for public comment on this item and seeing no one in the audience. Kevin, could we check with the Zoom audience?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Lori Ann Barber, you have the floor.
Thank you. I want to thank the council for picking up this reach code item and for the report from the staff. I'm very much in favor of Katari adopting some additional form of, you know, more reach code than we already have. We are in a climate crisis and it's important that we do what we can to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And so particularly requiring or prohibiting gas infrastructure in new buildings seems really important because as soon as you put in any kind of gas appliance, it's going to be emitting for 10, 20, 30 years, depending on the appliance. So I just think that is really, really important. And making sure that there are EV ready charger, charging, you know, that the EV ready option is chosen in many cases because as Susan or somebody else was saying, it's, it's really can be quite expensive if it's just capable as opposed to ready. So I think ready is important. And I also just wanted to mention, I know there's concern, you know, we live in fire area and and so people are concerned about disasters and having backup generators. And I get that concern. I think soon, so I just wanted to comment on the fact that California has mandated that all new cars be electric by 2035. And, you know, that's coming, there are more and more electric cars coming and they have much larger batteries in them than what would be, someone would buy as a backup for their home. And there's currently a bill in the legislature to require new electric vehicles by 2027 have bidirectional charging capacity. So I think we're going to see a lot of movement in that so that people will be able to either back up the grid or back up their house with a battery that's that they already own, that's in their driveway, that they don't have to go buy another one to put in their house. And that will hopefully reduce the need for both peaker plants and generators, which are also emitting fossil fuel. So anyway, I do want to thank, as I said, the council for taking this up and the staff for doing such an in-depth report and I, that's all I have.
Thank you for that.
Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
All right, so bring it back here. What is the pleasure of the council? Sure.
On EV charging, I would frankly be happy to wait for the, for the code update and stay in tier one. I would rather, rather than dropping out of tier one and adopting early, I would just wait and stay in tier one. I think the, the alternate for multifamily that's in tier one in the, in the proposed update is actually a really good alternate that I would like to see in our code. So, so I like the option of staying into your one. Adopting early would be fine. One year early would capture a few more units, get a few more chargers, but it's not worth it enough to me to mess with the code cycle. I would just stay in tier one when we have to do the, the code update in 2024 anyway. On building electrification, I like the proposal as it, as staff has put it together. I think that if you think about the, the special use case, we've been talking about of a plum natural gas line to support a generator for a medical use. You got to, you got to compare the, the cost of plumbing the whole site for natural gas for that particular emergency use with the cost of adding some battery storage to the already required solar, for instance, or something like that. So I'm not, I'm not seeing a need for an exception for medical use generators. Thanks. And oh, one, one question I meant to ask earlier. That in the PV discussion earlier, it said that single family requirement is 1.2 watts per square foot, but multifamily is higher. Is that right? It said it in the, in the slide, maybe that's too in the weeds, but that seems strange. A single family would have a lower per square foot PV requirement than multifamily.
That is another question that I would turn over to, to Misty and Neil.
It does seem anti-intuitive. I agree. And the reason we believe that it's like that is because there are also many common areas in the multifamily building. And so when we, when we made it our 1.2 or the 1.8 per square foot, we've, we've used dwelling units, but there's a lot of additional space in multifamily too that is often covered as well. Those are the minimums. Typically, most projects we find actually install a larger system.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I won't pursue that. That's off topic. Thanks.
Do you have? But did you, are you good with what Ben put forward? Okay, all right. Laura?
Thank you. So my preference, as much as possible, would be to try to make our breach code match pretty closely with some local example, if possible. I'm talking about the all electric. So I was looking at the city of Petaluma and it seemed to check most of the boxes of what was in the staff recommendation. But I always, maybe I should ask the string questions. I'm curious, is there a lot of difference between what you're proposing and what?
So I'll let Autumn speak to the differences in the code. One thing that Petaluma is a challenge with is they use the same mechanism as the city of Berkeley as their method of adoption. And so we definitely do not want to go that route as far as the legal mechanism. But I'll let Autumn speak to the specifics of the natural gas prohibitions.
Yes, I, yeah, I would say the Petalumas is, yes, is very much aligned with what we have presented here and are proposing. And the fact that they have, the fact that there's what's known as the municipal code amendment instead of a building code amendment, that doesn't, it's, it's the content, right? The requirements that are, that may be more, you know, what we're driving at here rather than a tool that they have used. So, but yes, Petalumas is, I would say, consistent with what we're recommending.
Okay, so I, that, that would be great because I think that would make it easier for builders and developers in the area to be, if it's more, if it's consistent and there's not major substantive changes that we want. I mean, if we want something very different, then that's one thing. But if it's just little details at the margins, it'd be nice to just match it up to substantial, substantially what they have in Petaluma. So that's one comment that I had. Now, there was just about the, kind of a nitpicky detail, but about the, the percentage that triggers a substantial remodel, substantial addition. It seems like if you're a small house, then you can't do as much of an addition without triggering compared to a big house. And that seemed a little odd to me, like a 3,000 square foot house could add 1,000 square foot addition without, and not electrify it. Is that, am I understanding that right?
The 600 square foot trigger would then kick in. So it's 50% or 600. And it's intended to address exactly the point you made.
Never mind.
But that's not what it says in the package. So just be clear that.
That is the intent, but we'll look at that when we bring back your.
Okay, good. So that totally takes care of my question. And then I think I'm just want to make sure we're addressing and giving you the feedback you need. I thought there were some either ors in the recommendations, right? So can you maybe just speak to that, which things you had multiple options?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's minimal. Just take a quick peek here. So, yeah, so one, so one question we were probably putting out there was going back to the substantial remodel, right? So, so again, within our, and we, we treat this differently and away from, we were thinking of it differently as the addition because the remodel could be multiple areas in the house, right? The addition is really probably concentrated in just one area, right? So it's easier to separate out. Okay, we could just go all electric here. Whereas if you're the whole building, you know, do you want to go all electric just in these parts of it? Or is it going to force the whole building to go all electric and is that fair? So, so our thought was, well, what if there's, well, here's an option for the council to think about and tell us what you think. What if the remodeled area was just made all electric ready? Right? So that, you know, it's ready for electrical appliances in the future? Or would we, would we have the all electric requirement for remodel? You know, so if you have thoughts on that, on that matter, that was, that was one of the key questions. I think that other, you know, just other areas for discussion were the exceptions to the all electric requirement, you know, particularly in relation to those non-residential requirements or, you know, or the residential, you know, were those a list of exceptions that makes sense to the council? Would you add or subtract? It's really those, those two.
Okay, thank you. I'm really not sure what, what my thoughts are at this point about the making it all electric versus electric ready on the remodeled area. I'd be open to hearing what other council members think. As far as the exceptions, I would like to see the exception for food production, industrial uses and, and such like that we talked about. And yeah, I'm just curious to hear what my colleagues think about all this. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think for, just to answer the remodeling question, I feel like, I mean, the, the classic answer, right? It depends, right? Because I'm just envisioning, you know, you get that primary suite or even the bathrooms, like all the bathroom, like if you have more than one bathroom in the house or two bathrooms or whatever, and then you have to replace your gas stove, right? That doesn't seem reasonable to me, right? Right? For example, and that would be, you know, maybe a remodel of a house. Whereas if they're remodeling the kitchen, then maybe that would be appropriate for that stove to be, if they're going to replace the stove, that, that it has to be electric, for example. I don't know. I'm just kind of, you know, thinking, thinking it through, like if it were me. And especially if it's, you know, building and again, we don't want to, what's the word I'm looking for? Put barriers up to ADUs, right, and new housing. But I feel like I, you know, just overarching, I feel like
feel like if this is something we can do to help, you know, reduce climate change in one year, I still feel like one year is still a year. And I would like to see this move forward rather than wait for the, the next cycle.
Okay. Um, so on the remodels, my preference would be to make it electric ready. My concern is in the example where we're adding a bedroom and maybe a bathroom. If you have to then all of a sudden have two sets of heaters, so you have to put in a heat pump for the new addition, but you have gas heating for the rest of it. Then you have two sets of vents and, you know, at some point, you know, then you're going to have to redo it or you have to make it even bigger and, and have a bigger expense to replace all of it. So that would be, that would be my preference on that. On the exceptions, I'm still a little bit torn on, on the generators because it doesn't have to be natural gas. It can be propane, which is less costly to, to plumb in for a all-house electric, all-house generator. So, and in, in a house that may or may not have the PV, I would hate to take away, I would hate to take away that option of someone having to be able to put in propane to monitor that because some people do have medical equipment that needs to run. And, and we saw when we had the PSPSs, there were people that came down to city hall to kind of make their, their equipment work. So I don't think everybody's there yet with solar and that, that would be my concern with that would be to just allow that as a possibility. But other than that, I, I'm okay with generally everything that's in here. And I like your idea of, of waiting on the EV charging stuff since we're gonna, you know, the benefit of going a year earlier is not going to add that much for us.
So.
Yeah, I agree with what my colleagues had shared about the, I also like the remodeling area must be made electric ready. I think that's a good option. And also exceptions for restaurants or commercial cooking food preparation and generators, as the mayor said, with, especially with the PSPS we experienced.
Yep.
I respond to some of it. I didn't answer the either or questions. I, I'd be fine with a very specific exception for propane-powered gen, propane-powered generators. That's far preferable to me than opening up, plumbing the site for natural gas with this one little exception. And you have natural gas there and people can hook into it when we're not looking. So a narrow exception sounds fine to me. I'd be fine with moving the EV charging like council member Rivers suggested and doing it this year, but I would rather it be tier one, not the base as the staff recommendation proposed. I would rather we stayed in tier one. And so I don't care whether we do that now or next year. I, I think it's, you know, it would make a difference of five chargers in town. So either way, it's fine. On the all-electric versus electric ready, I would, I would like a tailored electric ready that says something more like remodel area must be made electric ready if served by pre-existing infrastructure. For, so for existent, for example, if you remodel your, your kitchen, you can keep your gas stove, but you can't put in a new one. And you have to put in the electric outlet so that your next replacement can be electric or something like that. I don't want, I don't want this to open up putting in a new gas furnace and a new gas stove while also putting in the electric. So I, I'd like to, you know, limit it to electric ready as long as the gas stuff you're using, the stuff you already had. Does that make sense? Does it make sense to you?
Okay. Yeah, I think that's it.
Yeah.
Anything else?
So I, I have an electric vehicle and I just, is the reason we, level threes and DC chargers are not being considered just because they're so expensive?
It's typically not a residential.
No, 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 but for businesses, like in town maybe, or even at this building, right? Or I don't know, public buildings, anywhere.
I think that's why it's just for a mandate versus a, like, we would love to have level three
Yeah.
chargers and we would support them and we've, council has subsidized the, the building permitting process and all of those things, but to mandate that for a new business.
Oh, not, not, not asking about mandates. I'm just, so, so the reason only one and two are included in this is because they're mandates.
These will become mandates.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure we weren't prohibiting them. It'd be awesome. All right. Thank you.
Hundred thousand bucks at least.
Yeah. They're definitely not cheap.
Wow, wow, yeah.
But they're magic.
More wants one, she raised her hand.
No, I just wanted to respond. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, I would just wanted to weigh in on some of the other things that were brought up. So I would, I would be in favor of moving to the level one reach Cal Green early also. So that would be my preference on that. And as far as exceptions, I'm in favor of just a blanket exception for propane generators as well.
Kate, did you have something? Oh, okay. I thought you guys were finding that you had something else.
No, no, no. I, I just, I thought you said she raised her hand and I'm like, but I wasn't done talking. So that's all I was saying. We're good.
All right. So does staff have what they need?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Misty and Neil for spending the evening with us. Their expertise has been really, really helpful. And they both staff not only to provide the services to jurisdictions throughout the state, but also a regular working group that we've been able to start to attend. And it's really helped us to see what else is going on and to get questions. And I'm sure it will help us moving forward as we draft the ordinance. So really thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping us.
We appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
All right. So can we move on? All right. Then I guess Damian. Gee.
Yeah.
Your first time tonight, huh?
Yeah, the moment you've all been waiting for. So. All right. So just to, I'll try to keep it brief. Katati Park, that project continues to, to move forward playground equipment and shade structure installation is scheduled to start next week. And I don't know if you've been out there, but there's quite a bit of activity since pretty, it's a pretty substantial kind of remodel in the park. La Plaza West Sierra Road Construction, that is already underway. There's been some lighting work here at his school and West Katati or West Sierra, sorry. And that's going to be the ballard lights and that kind of stuff at the, at the intersection there as well as curb ramps and that, that type of pre-paving work, paving's expected to start mid to late May. So La Plaza Ring in West Sierra, the 2023 reconstruction, street reconstruction project, that's what you're seeing down at Myrtle. There's work going on with the pathway there in front of Putnam Park as well as curb ramps in the, in the area. They've done a lot of pottling. We again expect this to start mid to late May for the paving work. City Hall repainting, I don't have a schedule on that, but that should be getting going soon. Pocket Park is, the planting has been done. I don't know if it's all done, but at least it looks pretty done. Yeah, the plant, so nothing odd. It's all done. The planting's done. Well, almost all done. Actually, there's one caveat to that is that the planting's done, the weed barrier's down, they're going to mulch it. So we're looking for volunteers on April 29th to spread mulch. We do have, in the plants that were in there now, Farmster donated yarrow and lavender plants grown from seed at the farm. Actoid, that might be interesting. The RCD is also providing 50 milkweed plants in July for the parks. That's going to be a follow-on planting that's not there right now. So if you go look, looking for milkweed plants and you're like, why the heck aren't there, are there no milkweed plants here? It's because they're coming. They're on their way. Upcoming projects, we're working on the Redwood Drive in Cypress Avenue. Design is a pavement reconstruction and that's actually, it's actually completing right now. And that's going off to the state and we're going to, it's looking like a bid in the spring of 2024 for that. And we're also going to be bringing to council soon the sewer, separate sewer rehabilitation. Because that is needed ahead of the paving work. So we're going to be doing some sewer repairs on Cypress before we pave it. And then lastly, this past Saturday, we had our first Sweet Spring Festival at the Rhonda Fletty Ranch. And we had over a hundred guests come out throughout, come throughout the day to take plants and do nature-based crafts, learn about gardening, take home their own planted seeds, treats, get an animal and hydroponics demo. I'm not sure what the animal demo was, but anyway, there, a lot of fun stuff. And that was the coincide basically with Earth Day this past weekend. And then this Friday, April 28th, we host our annual Kids Night Out event from five to nine. This is basically where you can drop your kid off for pizza and play games while the parents can go do something fun or, or nothing at all, if that's what they want to do. And then Sunday, April 30th, we, not we, but the Katati Historical Society is bringing back their annual old-fashioned chicken barbecue. So that's going to be right here. Back at by the Katati Room. It's the first time since 2019. And it's from noon to four. And those tickets are for sale now at the Katati Chamber or the Historical Society or Katati Exchange Bank. And then the following Saturday, the fifth of May or sixth of May, sorry, we're doing our, our annual Katati Community Yard Sale at the Katati Room from eight to noon. Donations are accepted Wednesday and Thursday. And Wednesday in the afternoon, Thursday in the morning. And anything left over goes to the Redwood Gospel Mission. And then also Saturday, that same day, we're doing different events at the ranch. So the first is a rainwater capture workshop from 10 a.m. to noon. And this is free to learn about rainwater capture. And then following the workshop, we're also doing our first ever Katati Family Campout. So we can pitch a tent and stay the night there for some families that want to do that. So registration's open for that. And it should be fun. And then there's a bunch of other stuff that I won't get into because we're going on forever, but summer's coming. So a lot of events are coming up. And if you're interested in those, you can contact our recreation department and they have all the details. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Damian, where are the milkweed plants going to be planted?
Where exactly in Pocket Park?
In Pocket, I thought you were saying that you were planting some over at Rhonda Fletty.
That's part of the plan eventually too, but Pocket Park.
Pocket Park.
Pocket Park is where they're going.
The only reason I was asking is I, I was looking in, into getting some and they were saying that they're highly poisonous to animals. And so I just wanted to make sure that if we were putting them over at the ranch, that they weren't anywhere near. Cause especially like some of our cows like to munch on anything that looks like it might be grain.
Yeah, yeah. Good point. We don't want to put it where animals eat it.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, when was the rainwater capture program?
That one is May 6th, the Saturday at the ranch, 10 a.m. to noon.
10 to noon, you said?
10 to noon, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think there's an online sign up for it on the recreation page.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Then we will move on to city council member reports.
I don't have a report other than we walked with Sonoma Water Assistant Director Mike Thompson to do a walk of some of the Katati. What is that called, Laura? We went over by Stoney Point?
I forget the name of the creek. It's, it's part of the, it's in the, was it Copeland Creek?
Is it Copeland Creek?
They all kind of, yeah, they all kind of meet over there.
Right. So, yeah, we did that last week. So it was really good.
No, nothing new for it? Okay. Laura?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. The, I attended the Education Committee two-by-two meeting on 4/20. And which will become relevant in a minute. But anyway, we had a, a great presentation from Robin Bowen at the Child Parent Institute who, this group has received a workforce development grant to start a family resource center at John Reed Elementary School and to hire Spanish-speaking community health workers based at that community resource center. So now families from the school can come in there and it's, as far as I could tell, it's kind of acting like a navigation center to connect them with support services. And it's centered on families in A and B section right now. But the superintendent was really, of Sierra, the school district was really interested in opening more family resource centers. So that was really great to hear about. And then we had a couple of presentations from the Chief of Police of Renner Park and the Police Chief for SSU. The Police Chief at Renner Park had been requested to come talk to us because there's been concern in the community about student resource officers, school resource officers in the wake of the horrible event that happened recently and at Montgomery. And also there is a lot of community confusion about the lockdown that happened near Ranji Katati and Lawrence Jones, when there's somebody in the creek back there. So he came just to kind of address those issues and talk about it. He talked about student research, the school resource officer program and that his philosophy is to, that the resource officer is there to provide safety to the students, not to take over administrative disciplinary functions or to function as enforcing laws. So he, he said that the main, he really wanted to convey that the main way to make sure that philosophy gets enacted is by selecting the right SRA, like the right person. And so he talked a lot about how the school district is involved in picking who that person's going to be. I raised the question, like, is that philosophy enshrined in policy anywhere? And he said, no. And that it, it would reduce their flexibility too much to have a policy about that, which was sort of of concern to me, but I understood that in practice, probably getting the right person is the most important thing, more, more important than what policy is written down. He also talked about the crisis, how to, how they're planning to improve the dissemination of information when a lockdown occurs. Apparently, right now, when a lockdown happens, the decision about whether to push out that information on NICSOL has to do with who initiated the lockdown. Like, was it the police that initiated it or was it the school district? And that caused a lot of confusion in the community. So they've actually convened a task force now to create a color-coded system of whether the lockdown is like a code red, which is, you know, active problem going on or a code yellow where it's just precautionary or, you know, different tiers to, to help with messaging. And then also to have like a unified system for when is a communication going to go out so that it doesn't depend on who initiates the lockdown. And it's just a consistent process. So they're working on that now. And then I inquired and they said, yes, this will be for, for Thomas Page too. Everywhere in the school district is going to have the same protocol once they're done with their work. So I thought that was great. And the Police Chief of SSU came to give us a report about drug trends because, because of the fentanyl crisis. But honestly, I, I don't, Damian Kurt can maybe had a different impression, but it seemed to me like he spent most of the time talking about cannabis and psilocybin. And he touted the fact that he has arrested nine people at SSU for psilocybin possession and large amounts of psilocybin and mushrooms. And he shared with us that his opinion that you can die from a marijuana overdose, which I don't think is true. So it was really interesting presentation, especially because it happened on 4/20. It seems like SSU Police is very focused on cannabis and psilocybin. But he also did share some good information about, about fentanyl and about how most, I'm sure our police chief could share, knows all about this and how practically every drug that's out there right now is laced with fentanyl. And it's very hard to find anything that's not actually fentanyl. So there, it causes a lot of danger. One thing that was really interesting to me was that SSU is working right now with their cell providers to try to improve cell reception on campus because it's a safety issue. So I was hoping that somehow we could communicate with them and try to figure out how they're doing that because we have that same issue here. Okay. So that's it for the two-by-two. Mayor Harvey and I attended the City Leaders Summit last week, which was, or two weeks ago. We attended a lot of workshops, the ones that I think were most interesting to share with you. I attended, we attended a workshop on the future of Home, Project Home Key. So we got a lot of really good information about how that works, hotel motel conversions for permanent supportive housing and interim emergency housing. And how that can also be applied to commercial buildings and to single-family dwellings as well, but it doesn't have to be a hotel. So I learned some interesting stuff about that. We attended a great workshop about the Drug Abatement Act. And it was basically, I don't know if you all saw in the news, there was a drug house near Santa Rosa Junior College in Santa Rosa that got shut down. It was just a total blight on the community. It was in the press Democrat. And so the Assistant City Attorney from Santa Rosa actually was at the City Leader Summit to give this workshop about the legal process that they used to do the, to shut down the drug house and how successful it was. Apparently, there wasn't a lot of legal precedent for it before. And so it was sort of new, a new use of this law. And it worked really well. And he was basically begging us to tell our city attorneys all about it so that they get the message and know that this is a really powerful tool that they can use on any like problem properties, be it either a drug house or a house of prostitution or gambling operation or other kind of criminal activity that's going on in the house, can use this legal framework to, civil litigation framework to shut down the house. And the most, the biggest takeaway I had from this was a really exciting presentation we saw from the city of Beverly Hills about, it was called Reimagining Emergency Medical Services Through Mobile Integrated Healthcare. The city of Beverly Hills is funding through their general fund, a program where they have a, a van with a nurse practitioner on it that goes out and does any, anytime somebody calls 911 for a medical issue and does not subsequently get transferred to the hospital. They figured there's this big gap where calls are happening and person's not getting transported so that whatever medical issue caused them to call in the first place place probably wasn't addressed. So now they send a, a medical, a nurse practitioner out to check on that person as a follow-up visit. They also do proactive visits to households that do a lot of 911 calls. Like, some people tend to use 911 as their primary healthcare and it's enormously expensive. So instead they'll proactively send a nurse practitioner out and that's been able to, in some cases, cut the number of 911 calls from that person down to zero because they're actually getting their needs met. And then also when a person's discharged from a hospital, it's really frequent that they end up back in the emergency room shortly thereafter because discharge instructions can be confusing. Maybe the person's not capable of setting up the ongoing support that they need after that. So the nurse practitioner would also go out and do follow-up visits subsequent to a hospital discharge. Anyway, the program is having amazing results and systemically, it's saving a lot of money from the healthcare providers, for the healthcare providers. They're funding it through their general fund and hoping that eventually the healthcare providers are going to pick up the tab because ultimately they're the ones who are reaping the savings right now. But a lot of the cost to start up the program had to do with administrative startup costs and getting the vehicles and all of that. So the, there were a couple of council members from Renner Park who were there at the workshop as well. And we're all really interested in this because we already have the administrative structure of the safe team. And so I was just very interested in seeing if that's something that we could potentially investigate adding on to our safe service. Except for my very long report, sorry for the length.
Well, I don't have anything to add on the City Leaders Summit, but I did provide Damian with, with all the slides. Those were really great presentations that we went to on those subjects. So I also attended the Mayor's and Council Members Meeting and we had a really good presentation by Dave Kiff about homelessness and what's, what's going on in the county and, and the things that they're doing and not doing and the things that can get better. So he, it's a work in progress, he said. So they are making, making progress slowly but surely. And that is all I have. Okay. Okay.
So I did go to the Renner Park Katati Regional Library Advisory Board this last week and neglected to mention that we, there are actually two openings right now. And to the best of my knowledge, none of the people on it are actually residents of Katati. So it would be really cool if we could get someone from Katati on the actual board. I'm like just advisory, I'm not actually on it. So if we could get someone from our town on there, that'd be really great. And then the, the major thing we spent the majority of the time talking about is they got this, they actually asked for a certain amount and they were given a lot more on this grant to set up lunches at the library. So over the summer, they're gonna provide lunch to all the kids in the neighborhood who need, you know, don't have that food because schools closed. So I just thought that was a really cool thing that I wanted to share, that they got that big grant and are ramping up to provide those lunches to anyone who needs them.
Anything else? All right. That brings us to information received after the agenda was posted. We have.
Did we want to do public comment on non-action agenda items?
Yes, thank you so much. There are no audience members here, but could we check with our Zoom members?
Have two Zoom attendees, Speaker Zoom attendees. If you'd like to make a public comment on non-action agenda items, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for that. And now can we move to items received after the agenda was posted?
There were none.
Okay. All right. Then I will say that we are adjourned at 9:46. Thank you, everyone.